Welcome to Student Citizen of the Month, my favorite program of the month. I'm Mayor John Lewis and we will be having the assistance in the next few minutes of members of the town council. This is Councilmember Victor Peterson, Vice Mayor Eddie Cook, Councilmember Ben Cooper, Councilmember Jen Daniels. Please give them a nice round of applause. In Gilbert this morning, I was at Orbital Sciences. Who knows where Orbital Sciences is? At Elliott and McQueen. And I just wanted to show this to you because I was given a plaque representing Gilbert. In the next few months, there will be 81 satellites assembled in Gilbert, Arizona, that will then be launched and they will help the data communications for the entire world. And so we can officially say that Gilbert is connecting the world, right here with those 81 satellites. Now, the reason why I mention that is how does that happen? Well, it happens because we have some of the finest teachers in the world that help educate our students. And your teachers, your administrators are the ones who have looked at you and said, "They need to be recognized." And so tonight, for sake of time, we won't be talking about each of you individually, but we will recognize each of you. And some of you know why you're recognized, some of you don't. And it may be that you were doing something in your classroom, it might have been something on the playground, it might have been something in a junior high or high school setting that someone noticed you. And so whatever you're doing, keep doing it, because you are our finest. Now, this first part gives me a chance to do a few quick announcements, marketing for Gilbert, because you're part of our Gilbert marketing group, and then we'll get right into the program. This Saturday, at Freestone Park, is the Kapow Superhero Adventure Fund, begins at 8:00 AM. If you haven't registered, you could still probably come in an outfit, but if you've registered, you can come and you'll be dressed in all sorts of superhero outfits. And any of you could come and cheer them on. So it's 8:00 AM at Freestone Park on Saturday. The next slide will talk about a week from Saturday, a week from, two days from now. So nine days in the morning is the annual Mayor's Character Counts Race. Over on the wall are our six pillars of character counts. And what this race does, it helps give the funding so that we can have some recognition programs for those students who have been part of character counts, which could be some of you. We encourage you, because this is more of a family run, and it's a run where a family could sign up, and it's two miles, but you could have as many as you would like to run the two miles or walk. And so we encourage you to do flyers in the back of the room, as you go out the door, you'll be able to pick up, and we encourage you to sign up for the Mayor's Character Counts Run. The third slide would just happen to be with this enter key, I think. On Saturday, April 12th, the annual Global Village Festival. How many of you have been to this before? Oh, this is really nice that I'm saying this, because we've done it a number of years. This is one of the finest family activities that Gilbert has. It's on Saturday, and I think my eyes are saying from noon to 6:00. Is that, oh, Parade of Nations is at 3:00? No, noon to, yeah, noon to 6:00. And a parade at 3:00 is the Parade of Nations. This is a free activity, a lot of different things that family members can do. And then individuals from all over the world, especially Gilbert citizens, who have these talents, will be performing. And it's right here, thank you, Gardinia, it's right here out on the lawn, so it's easy to find, you're already here. But we don't want you to stay here for a couple weeks, you can get to do other things in Gilbert and come back, but Saturday, April the 12th, invite you to come. There's also a flyer in Councilmember Daniels, is it out on that back table? Operation Welcome Home, Thursday, April 17th at 5:30 PM. We love to celebrate in Gilbert, the return of local residents who have served abroad to protect our freedom and our country. And when they come back and we hear about it, we celebrate. This is not a lengthy program, probably 30 to 40 minutes, right here in this room, and we invite you to come, another great family activity, where you could welcome home someone who has served, and in this case, it's a total of three individuals that will be recognized on that night. So is that enough Gilbert marketing for a few minutes? Thank you for letting me do that. We now turn back to you, and those individuals that we want to recognize, we are going to divide you into three groups. The first two groups are those who are in elementary school. And if your elementary school begins with the letter A to J, you are in Group One. The groups will come down all together, they'll stand behind me, and then we will have, as Councilmember Daniels says, your name, you'll come up one at a time, we'll take a picture right here. If parents, teachers, grandparents wanted to take a picture, they can come down and do it right here. And after we snap the picture, we'll also take one, from Gilbert Digital's perspective, right here, Gardinia, let's give her a big hand. She will be posting this on the town website, and, oh, not one, Facebook, thank you, Facebook, and you can go out there and like it and just enjoy the pictures that Gardinia takes too. Anything else I missed on that? Okay, so, Group Number One, if your elementary school begins from an A to J, the first letter, please come on down and stand right to my right, back here by Vice Mayor Cook. Come on down. And Councilmember Daniels, you may begin.
Thank you, Mayor. From Greenfield Elementary, Samuel Friedman. And Mayor, from Islands Elementary, Jacob Barnes.
And so Group One, we're going to take a group picture, we'll have you come stand right here, and all the council members will come join. And you may not have noticed, but they have received Shop Gilbert bags, and they have, well, permission, if you'd like, to go for ice cream and treats and yogurt and everything like that in Gilbert when we're done tonight. Or they could go home and do homework, one or the other. Please join me in giving Group One a big round of applause, thank you. You may be seated. Group Two, if your elementary school begins with the letter K to Z, please come on down. Councilmember Daniels, you may continue. Gardinia, did you call me cute? Is that what you just said? That was Group Two. Let's give Group Two another big round of applause, thank you. Group Three, if you are in junior high or high school, please come on down. While that group is coming down, there's another special group we wanted to recognize. If you are a teacher, school administrator, would you please stand? We thank you for your efforts. There is a statement that someone made that I so appreciate, they said, "The noblest and greatest calling of all is that of teaching." And so for those who are standing, we thank you for being some of our finest assets in Gilbert and training our finest assets in Gilbert. So thank you very much. Councilmember Daniels, continue.
From Campo Verde High School, Spencer Anderson. And last but not least, Mayor, from South Valley Junior High, Christopher Oaken.
Group Three, let's gather for our picture. So while we're gathering, Joe, we talked about this, we're all committed, all council members are doing at least five teams. The goal is by Monday, so that I don't lose the bet to you. And so the bet, this is Joe over, I guess I better get back here for the, this is Joe, and we've got to bet to see how many teams we can get in the Mayor's Character Counts Race, and this group is going to help me, because they are racers. Let's hear a big round of applause for Group Three, thank you. As we conclude the wonderful Student Citizen of the Month program, we thank you again for coming. And for those of you who can stay in just a few minutes, we will be recognizing some of our students who are part of the People to People Ambassador Program, and also the Gilbert High School Indoor Percussion Ensemble will be recognized. But outside of that, as I said, you are now dismissed to go and shop Gilbert or to go home and do homework, whatever you think is most appropriate. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
This will be our five-second warning before we begin.
This will be our five-second warning before we begin. Welcome to our March 27th, 2014 Gilbert Town Council Meeting. I'm Mayor John Lewis. It's great to have you here. We will begin with an invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. As noted on the agenda, the invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk. An interested person should contact the clerk for further information. Tonight, the invocation will be offered by Pastor Tom Alexander of Two Rivers Church. And then, Councilmember Victor Peterson will introduce one of the scouts to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We invite those who are here in council chambers to please arise.
Father God, we thank you for our children that we have seen here tonight. And we thank you for all these wonderful opportunities that we have in this town in which we live. And now we ask that there would be wisdom on our mayor and the council members as they decide the things that are important to us as a community and to help us march forward in an ordered and prosperous fashion. We pray these things in your holy name. Amen.
Aman Carpenter will help us lead in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks so much. What we're going to do now is just take a moment. We've got a lot of you, so we might abbreviate a little bit. But if you'll just give us your name and your rank, we're going to pass the mic down and let each of you have a chance to do that. And what we're going to do as well is give you each a copy of, a pocket-sized copy of the U.S. Constitution. And I encourage you to study that, and we thank you for being here tonight. So let's go ahead.
Seth Resendez, Tenderfoot Scout.
Daniel Penya, Tenderfoot Scout.
Nate Shire, First Class.
Nash Bryce, Tenderfoot.
Robert Whitlock.
Second Class.
Third Class.
Kevin Grady, Tenderfoot.
Jacob Eberhard, Star Scout.
Matthew Stokes, First Class.
Nathan Hughes, First Class.
Jordan Hughes, Star Scout.
Spencer Barber, Tenderfoot.
Aman Carpenter, Tenderfoot.
Matthew Nielsen, Tenderfoot.
Alexander Sicilio, Tenderfoot.
Jayden Moody, Tenderfoot.
Devin O'Call, New.
Justin Florenceworth, Tenderfoot.
Nathan Clegg, Scout.
Benjamin Timothy, Tenderfoot.
Eli Andelen, Second Class.
Quinn Resendez, First Class.
William Whitlock, First Class.
Matthew McGrath, and I'm Star.
We sure do appreciate our Boy Scouts for being here tonight and helping us with that. Let's give them a big round of applause.
Thank you to the scouts. Next on the agenda is the roll call, which will be conducted by Town Clerk Kathy Templeton.
Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson. Here. Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
For Miss President.
To our Town Clerk, I had heard that Councilmember Ray was going to be trying to call in. Do you know the status of that? We'll see if we can. Next on the agenda, the Presentations and Proclamations. Councilmember Peterson, on number two, if you could maybe tie that into our Forest City Service Day.
Mayor, I'd just like to recognize that we have a proclamation recognizing April 1st as a National Service Recognition Day. And the volunteers in the town of Gilbert really do make it the wonderful place that it is. They help serve on our boards and commissions. They serve their neighbors, they serve the elderly, they serve the sick. They serve all kinds of people in our community. We really appreciate them and all that they do. They have a tremendous impact for good in our community. And so just want to recognize that that proclamation's been issued for April 1st. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. And then the Forest City, tying that into service.
Well, Forest City is, well, we actually work with Gilbert Can, who's putting on that character race. But also, one week after that, we have a day of service called We Are Gilbert Day. And you can actually go to Gilbert Can's website to sign up for that. There's volunteer opportunities from helping with the homeless ministry to serving children who've been victims of human trafficking. So there's some great opportunities there. It's at gilbertcan.org, the website. And you actually just click on the volunteer registration link. And you can also sign up for the race from that website. So I encourage everyone to go there, gilbertcan.org. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, Vice Mayor Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to invite Stan Silas to the front, if he's here. Well, thank you. Tonight, we're going to have a proclamation related to the Fair Housing Amendment Act. But first, Stan, could you introduce yourself and your role?
My name is Stanley Silas. I'm a Senior Staff Attorney with Community Legal Services. And I also live here in Gilbert. I want to thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council for allowing Community Legal Services to partner with your fine staff at the Community Development Staff as part of Parks and Rec to put on this first-time event in the city, the town of Gilbert. Come April 17th, there will be a significant event having to do with fair housing from 4:00 to 7:00 at the Regional Library at Guadalupe. And since April 11th, 1968, is the passage of the Federal Fair Housing Act. This is a significant event for the town to participate in. And Community Legal Services is proud to be a partner with the town of Gilbert as it unveils this first-time event having to do with the Fair Housing Act and the elimination of unlawful discrimination in the sale and rental of housing, both public and private. Thank you, sir.
Can we have a round of applause? Thank you.
For Councilmember Daniels comes forward. Every now and then, we just slip the agenda around slightly. Agenda item 41 is current events from the mayor. And we have a short video to show in just a moment. I was told it would be easier to have a couple of PowerPoint slides up, and so I'll do it right now. As Councilmember Peterson mentioned, a week from Saturday, we invite all Gilbert residents to sign up and not wait to a week from Saturday, probably to do it tonight, and sign up for the Mayor's Character Counts Race. We have here in council chambers our six pillars of character. And every year, we do a recognition of a lot of students in Gilbert that have displayed the attributes of the pillars of character. In preparation for that, we do this event. And it's family-oriented. In fact, the two miles, you can have as many family members as you would like, and that's part of the fun. The details are on this flyer that is also available as you would leave council chambers. It's on the website, and so we encourage you to be part of the Mayor's Character Counts Race. The next slide, this Saturday, if you are just interested in seeing superheroes of all sizes, from young ages to old, dressed up in their outfits. There's a race that will be taking place at Freestone Park beginning at 8:00 a.m. Activity's going all the way till noon. The other event will be two weeks from Saturday, on Saturday, April 12th, from noon to 6:00, with 3:00 p.m. being the official Parade of Nations. And this is one of the great Gilbert activities for families. Free admission, and individuals from all over the world, especially those that live here in Gilbert, will be displaying their talents. There will be booze, food, lots of fun, and it's right here on the grass outside of Town Hall. We invite you to come to those three events. So with that, I now give the microphone to Councilmember Daniels to talk about People-to-People Ambassadorship.
Yes, Mayor, and we have some fantastic youth that we'd love to come up right about now. And we'll have you guys introduce yourselves. Mayor, this is an incredible program that I've only just learned about, but that we can be incredibly proud of the fact that we have representatives from Gilbert participating. And so we're going to have Nicole here tell us a little bit about the program, and then we'll pass the mic to Holden. He can tell us a little bit more.
Hi, so I'm Nicole, and I'd like to start off by thanking Mayor Lewis for having us tonight in the true spirit of People-to-People Ambassador Program by connecting us to the citizens of Gilbert. This program was started by President Dwight D. Eisenhower after World War II to prevent something so terrible from happening again by connecting the citizens of the world with each other through the youngest generation that was coming to be the next leaders. His hopes were that when all of the citizens and all the people learned to work together and to live together in harmony, that eventually the leaders would have to follow and also learn to work together. As ambassadors, we continue this dream of his. And we travel to over 40 countries in all seven continents. And we get to learn about and experience the culture that is equal to many semesters of studying abroad as a high school or college student and is also equal to many classes, like social studies, that we get in just 19 days. We also get a unique experience that many tourists don't get because many countries and organizations recognize People-to-People as something that is really making a difference. And so they will do whatever it takes to get them the best experience they can get. So we, as ambassadors, get to do so many amazing things that are so unique to just us and just those countries. We also work together with the people who live there, and we do service projects that help maybe like disabled children or elderly people and maybe just brighten up their day or get some resources maybe they couldn't get on their own. As student ambassadors, we are getting the skills we need to become the next leaders.
Thank you, Nicole. So starting this summer, June 10th, we are doing a three-week trip to Ireland, Scotland, Wales, and England. And in England, we are going to go to Parliament. And so we are here tonight to compare the differences between the government in America to Parliament in England, or in the UK. And so basically there, we're going to visit castles. And in Wales, we're going to go see like the torture chambers that they used. Thank you. So we're also going to do a homestay for three days. We're going to have at least two other student ambassadors with us in our homestay where we learn what everyday life is like for people who live in the UK.
Let's go ahead and give him a round of applause, too. I'm Mrs. Lindsay Hirmanz. I'm a teacher here in Gilbert. And I have the privilege and honor to interview and read letters of recommendations for these students. And then they've been fortunate enough to be accepted into our program. And myself, along with other leaders from around the state, are going to shepherd on them on this program. Throughout the year, they go through a series of trainings and things like that to make sure that they know how to actually represent our town of Gilbert quite well and American citizens as well. So I'm very, very proud of them, as are their parents that are here in the audience, too. And we do very much appreciate you taking the time to include us in your meeting tonight and honor this special group of kids. I think we all want to pack our bags and go with you, if that's okay. We do have these certificates of recognition from the mayor's office for being selected to participate in the People-to-People Ambassador Program. This program recognizes young people who display good character traits and gives students the opportunity for educational growth through travel abroad. With the world as their classroom, students gain firsthand knowledge of cultural awareness through educational and team-building activities. So on behalf of the mayor and council, thank you for representing Gilbert, and we wish you the best of luck this summer.
You could just say your name and which school you attend. Please go ahead and pass the microphone down.
I'm Nicole Miasis, and I go to Payne Junior High.
I'm Terris Melter, and I go to Noah Barney Junior High.
I'm Bree Pharaoh, and I go to Payne Junior High.
I'm Caitlin Janeski, and I go to Chandler Peppatory Academy.
I'm Holden Belfei, and I go to Mesa Academy.
I'm a teacher at Greenfield Junior High.
Have a great trip, and thank you for being such terrific ambassadors for Gilbert. Speaking of ambassadorship, Gilbert High School, and a lot of things are happening, and we will try and recognize as many of these outstanding events in the next two months before school ends. Last week, from the country of England, Lord Mayor Duncan Sands, great-grandson of Winston Churchill, came and attended a Gilbert High School Assembly to invite our Gilbert High School marching band to perform in the 2015 New Year's Day Parade in London, England. And I thought that on a cool scale, that would be...
And I thought that, on a cool scale, that was a 10-plus, and so we congratulate Gilbert High School. Speaking of Gilbert High School, there's this indoor percussion ensemble group that has just been invited to some national competitions, maybe it's even worldwide competitions. We're going to learn about that and ask that group to please come forward. And you can just stand right here to my right. Sam, you get to come right here. Straight line, and just a moment, we're going to pass the microphone down. It'll be easy, they don't have to say which school they're from. These are Gilbert High School Tigers right here. Sam, if you could just tell us what, what's all, what this group's all about, and what's this competition that you'll be part of?
So, my name is Sam Hershey, and we are the Gilbert Indoor Percussion Ensemble. We are currently ranked first in our circuit in Arizona, and we've competed nationally twice already, and so we've been invited to go to Dayton, Ohio for world championships in two weeks. And so, we've been working super hard all season to fundraise for that, and it's really a special opportunity for a group from Arizona to go, especially because Gilbert hasn't been represented in this activity for over 10 years, so we are really excited to go.
Let's pass the microphone down, and if you can each state your name, please.
My name is Noah Hadlin.
I'm Bailey Bruce.
I'm Samantha Manning.
I'm Elise Thompson.
I'm Nolan Murray.
I'm Andre Truba.
I'm Austin Downing.
I'm TJ Bartley.
I'm Ashley Whitman.
I'm Kayla Truba.
I'm Tori Hatch.
We're going to get a little bit closer and do a team picture, and while we're taking the picture, we can get the video ready, and there's a special video that we get to see that shows this team in action, is that right? Okay, so, a little closer, probably one, two, three rows if we can. Tall ones in the back, do I get to be in the back? Oh, yes. Before that video starts, we'll get ready for picture, but just in case the video started while we're taking a picture, Sam, tell us about this video.
So, this is a video we put together, it's kind of our, it's called our Gilbert Go-Doo video, and it's kind of trying to spread the word about what we've been doing and our fundraising goals, and we have been lucky enough to reach our fundraising goal this year to go to Ohio, but since, you know, it's not just a one-year, I don't know, activity, thanks, Sam, we're trying to continue to raise money to support next years and the year after, and so this is kind of a video that we've put together to kind of get the, spread the word about Gilbert and what we believe in, so, yeah.
And you know, before we take this picture, there's someone who wants to take your picture, he's called your principal. Let's get him up here real fast. We'll, we'll take a, oh, okay, yeah. I mean, he's part of the action here. Who is this principal? Introduce yourself.
Hi, guys, I'm Chris Stroud, and I'm the very proud principal of these young, fine young men and women that you see here. Let's give him a round of applause, everybody. Go Tigers!
All right, now, in the back, while we're taking the pictures, if you want to roll the video, you may.
What really matters is like the friends you make and the experiences you have.
Anybody out there that's wanting to drum line? It's hard, it's cold.
WGI is the most incredible thing. When you're out there on the floor with, you know, 20, 30 of your best friends, and you get to do something you love in front of an entire gym full of people who came just to see you, there's no people like you.
I did this activity because I've been doing it since I was a sophomore in high school, and it's what I love to do, so I can't imagine myself doing anything else.
WGI to me is like a family. Really, my favorite part of it all is just being around everyone and just performing and coming together as an ensemble and really showing everyone what Gilbert Indoor Profession is made of.
My name is Joshua Stevens.
I am Sam Hershey.
I am Noah Hadlin.
I am Samantha Manning.
I am Antonio Montez.
And we are...
We are.
We are.
Thank you, a big round of applause, and best of luck in Dayton, Ohio. Thank you. As Greg Tilke comes forward, I'm going to do one more thing. This is kind of shifting to Agenda 41, Report from the Mayor on Town Events. This morning, representing Gilbert, I was at Orbital Sciences, and there were four business partners, Gilbert was one of the four, Orbital Sciences was one, a company called Iridium Communications, and a company called Talus Alenia Space from France. We started the kickoff for the Iridium NEXT Project, which is in Gilbert. Eighty-one satellites that will be assembled in the next few months, that then will be launched in 2015 to connect the world. These satellites will go all over the world, up in the sky, so that we have data communications, and when people start to communicate with phones and, and computers and such, once these satellites are in the sky, it will be because of their connection from Gilbert, Arizona. So, on behalf of all our Gilbert residents, I accept this plaque, and just know that this was a very significant event today in Gilbert, Arizona, where the kickoff of this project of assembling eighty-one satellites that will be launched next year took place. Thank you. Representing our sister cities, we now have a presentation from Greg Tilke.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. Greg Tilke, President of Gilbert Sister Cities, pleased to be here tonight. Interested, we followed People-to-People because that's kind of the predecessor to Gilbert Sister, or to Sister Cities International, started in 1956 by President Eisenhower, so good timing. I want to mention before we start, thanks to Councilmember Taylor, he's one of, he's our liaison this year from the council, so thank you. If I miss anything tonight, please add to it. I think I'll start, though, I don't know if a lot of people know a lot about Gilbert Sister Cities, so let me give you a little brief overview. Started in 1995, effort was trying to enhance economic development efforts, trying to get some more business across the pond, and so we put together a program, formed a board, and in 1998, we had a sister city with, our first sister city with Newton Abbey Northern Ireland. Mayor Dunham was over that, signed that agreement, and we started then in 2000 with a pen pal, or a pen pal program before that, and then a student exchange in 2000. In 2002, we, we had Lashawn, China, in this council chambers. Mayor Berman was mayor then, he signed the agreement to bring in Lashawn, China. I should mention, Newton Abbey's about 85,000 people, Lashawn, China, their, their city proper's about 500,000, the, the area that we're really partnering with is about 3.5 million, so it's a good-sized community. The other thing that's interesting about Newton Abbey now, they are, as I said, 85,000 population. There's another city to the north called Antrim, they're going to, as they call, amalgamate with them in 2015, they got 65,000 people there, so probably in next year or so, Newton Abbey won't be called Newton Abbey anymore, they have a new name, and we don't know what that'll be yet, so that'll be on the horizon. Part of the cornerstone for our program has been our Youth Ambassador Program, it's commonly called Student Exchange, we've changed the name this year to Youth Ambassador. Started in 2000, since that time, we send over 30 students abroad. Most recently, in China, we sent, I think about four years ago, we started sending students to Lashawn, so it's been a great exchange. A lot of good students have gone, gone over the years to, to both cities. Some of our initiatives for this coming year, one, as you're aware of, we're starting to work with other sister city, potential sister cities, one in Canada, Winnipeg. I know the mayor and economic development have done some work with folks over there, so we're looking at that as a possible sister city. We have to see if they want to do that first. We're also looking at, as I said, the Youth Ambassador, that'll be a very important program again this year. And then a big one that I've been pushing for a while, and we're trying to get some traction at the state level, is economic development-related, back to my roots. We want to make sure that, we think there's a real opportunity there with sister cities across the state, not just in the valley, to take advantage of the relationships all those communities have with their sister cities. For instance, we've, in Newton Abbey, they've got a sister city in Poland, and another one in Germany. Lashawn has a sister city in Australia. I think we can really partner with all of those communities, and if we spread that across the state, and Phoenix has eight or nine sister cities, as does Tempe, we've got in-rolls right into those cities, so we're gonna try to, on a statewide basis, push to enhance that program. One of the big things coming up, two big things, one, you saw that Gilbert High's going to London. A few years ago, they went to Newton Abbey as part of an exchange. This next year, Williams Field High is going to Dublin and to Newton Abbey, I think around St. Patrick's Day, so we're looking forward to that, they'll represent us well. And the big initiative that we're excited about, Mayor Fraser Agnew and his wife, Lila, are coming over April 6th to the 15th. They will be here on the afternoon of, lunchtime, 11:40, I guess, Mayor, is gonna be the lunch, 11:40, here in the council chambers, to tell a little bit about Newton Abbey and to discuss that, so that'll be on April 7th, Monday, and I think that's about all I have to add, other than anybody interested in getting involved with Gilbert Sister Cities, www.gilbertsistercities.com. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, thank you. Just want to publicly thank Greg Tilke for his leadership of Gilbert Sister Cities and great vision that he has. I love how he's including the youth, kind of building, building the future of our reach. I know you have an ambassador forum talking about global reach, and this is a wonderful aspect of that, that I think, you know, we're able to build on for, for many years to come. The, the board of Sister Cities is committed to this town, they have great leadership capabilities and depth of experience here, and so thrilled to have them and your leadership, so thank you, Greg.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Greg, thank you for coming.
You're welcome, thanks.
Vice Mayor Cook, next on the agenda is communication from citizens, and it appears we do not have any requests tonight.
That's correct, Mayor.
Let me just confirm, as I look through council chambers, okay. We will move to the consent calendar, as noted on the agenda. The items listed on the consent calendar may be approved by a single motion unless removed at the request of council for further discussion or action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Vice Mayor Cook, what requests do we have from the council?
Mayor, we have agenda items number 17 and number 18 for discussion.
Thank you. For the other agenda items, I would entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move that the council approves agenda items eight, 10 through 13, 19 through 21, 23, accept the changes to the minutes for agenda item number 24, and remove agenda item number 14 from the agenda for tonight.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a 6-0 vote, and then to our town clerk, where we were thinking Councilmember Ray was going to try and call him, we haven't heard from him yet, okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Cook, I wrote down 17 to begin with?
Yes, agenda item number 17, Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Taylor.
Please.
Mayor, I don't have any comments, I just pulled it so that I could vote on it separately.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor, any comments?
Yeah, Mayor, I would just add, I'm definitely supportive of the CERT project, I'm certified in that, went through that, and, you know, in a little different model that I just thought I'd toss out here, the $5,000 here in the packet report is going to purchase things like flashlights and backpacks and things I think that we already have in our homes or could easily be acquired, and the, the model that I went through actually was one where we paid a small tuition, $30, $40, to cover the costs of some of the things that aren't typically found in the home, like the CPR masks, and so I think just in practical terms, you know, this probably is something that we can handle in a different, in a different funding model, so.
Thank you. Would a member of the council like to make a motion?
I move that we approve agenda item 17.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, second, please vote. That's approved with a 4-2 vote, thank you. Agenda item 18.
Mayor, Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you, Mayor. So, when I read through this, I had one concern. It's my understanding that under state law, and this is more of a legal question probably than anything, under state law, current state law, it would be statistically impossible for any candidate, if there are less than eight candidates running for town council positions this coming election, it would be statistically impossible for anyone to win in a primary election. And without change in state law, it would seem to me unnecessary for us to, and, and an unnecessary expense, it's very expensive to hold elections, an unnecessary expense to go through a primary election. So, do we have the option, if there are less than eight, if we still move forward with this agenda item tonight, to, in essence, cancel a primary?
Mayor, Councilwoman Daniels, although it may be physically impossible for one to get 50% of the votes under the circumstances you described, I believe that the requirement to hold a primary would still be in effect, and we, we would have to hold one. Thank you.
So, maybe for the general public's understanding, Kathy, can you explain how someone would have to win, or what the vote is calculated on in order for someone to win in a primary election coming up?
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Daniels, in a non-mayor election year, the turnout or ability to win an election at the primary would be based on the total number of ballots cast for that election, which means if we have 100,000 people vote for governor, in order to be elected to the town council, you would need 50,001 votes. So, it is very unlikely that anybody would be elected at the primary. It's very different in a mayor year. In a mayor year, the calculation is based upon the total votes cast for mayor in the Gilbert part of the election. So, if we have 20,000 people vote for mayor, it would take 10,001 votes to be elected at the primary, and that would be for the council members as well as the mayor. So, on the mayor election year, it is much easier to have elected officials elected at the primary, and it is very highly unlikely, based on the current calculation, that a council member would be elected outright at the primary in a non-mayor cycle.
So, Mayor, what I think is interesting, and I think we should take note of, is that because of the language in the state law, not only do we not have the ability to cancel a primary if it's not needed, and it would only not be needed if we had eight or fewer candidates running for the four positions that will be open, but we're also spending a lot of taxpayer money in order to hold that election with no decisive outcome of that election, other than maybe ranking the candidates at that...
And I think for the candidates, too, it puts on a lot of additional time and expense, so I don't know if there's anything that can be done this legislative session, and it may be too late, but that could be one thing we could ask town leadership to look into, and, but from this discussion, for this election year, it looks like there would be, be both a primary and a general election, that if there's eight or fewer candidates, it would be the same number of candidates in both the elections, is that...
Mayor, Mayor Lewis, that is correct. There was some legislation that was proposed and supported by Queen Creek that would change the way that the calculation would occur, so it would not be based upon all the votes for all the state offices and county offices. But unfortunately, that was pulled, I believe, with a striker, so that is off the table. At this point, we have been advised that there's a slim possibility it may be added back into another bill, and that some of the Gilbert legislators are supporting that.
And if we go ahead and vote in favor of this, which is, from a legal standpoint, probably your recommendation, there could be some changes made at a future council meeting. probably your recommendation, there could be some changes made at a future council meeting.
Mayor, members of the council, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay.
I move to approve agenda item 18. Mayor has presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, with that, with that motion, second, please vote. That's approved with a 6-0 vote. Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook, I believe that covers the consent calendar.
Mayor, that's absolutely correct.
Thank you. We move to the public hearing. Agenda items 25 through 35 will be heard at one public hearing, at which time anyone wishing to comment on a public hearing item may do so. Comments will be heard from those in support of or in opposition to an item. And as noted on the agenda, in order to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the council. After the public hearing, the council may act on all items, not requiring additional staff, public, or council member comment with a single vote. Before we open any of the public hearing items, Vice Mayor Cook, and I may ask this to the council, too, do you have a sense of which, and I know we have several where we have citizens that wish to speak, but are there some that we didn't get requests that the council is ready to move forward on?
Mayor, the only communication I have received was from the citizens and then from the council.
The citizens have requested to speak on 27, 28, and 30. Is that correct?
And we also have one for 26.
26, thank you. So 26, 27, 28, and 30. To council members, as you look at the items that I didn't mention, would you like to have some discussion from town staff on those items?
29.
29.
Mayor.
I think 29 could probably be tied in with 32, with number 30. Thank you. And...
29.
29, okay. So if I were to open the public hearing on 25, I guess it would be 25, and 31...
31.
...to 35. So 25 and then 31 through 35, it sounds like the council would be ready to proceed with those items. Okay. So I will do that. I will open the public hearing now on agenda item 25 and agenda items 31 through 35. And I close the public hearing on agenda item 25 and 31 through 35, and I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move that the council approves agenda items 25, 31 through 35.
Second.
With that motion, second, please vote. Thank you. Those items are approved with a 6-0 vote. I now open the public hearing on agenda item 26, and we have one citizen that wished to speak on that. Why don't we have that citizen speak, and then we'll see if the council would also like to have town staff make a presentation if possible. Otherwise, we may move forward on that. So Vice Mayor Cook, who wished to speak on 26?
Mayor, we'd like to welcome Jackson Mall to the podium.
And Jackson, as you know, if you could state for the record if you're a resident of Gilbert, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of council. My name's Jackson Mall. I represent the Home Builders Association of Central Arizona, and I am not a Gilbert resident. Mayor, when we look at proposed system development fees, there's basically four things we look at. One is the service that the fee payer is paying being provided. Is the service going to be provided in a timely fashion? Is the total cost of the service distributed proportionately amongst all of the new users? And fourth, whether the new user is being asked to pay for more, or pay more for the level of service than existing users have paid. Fortunately, we believe that Gilbert's proposed fees are, for the most part, consistent with the first three issues. However, the last time I appeared before you on this issue, I expressed concern on behalf of the Home Builders Association related to the fourth issue. Specifically, we raised the issue as to whether or not the new park users were being asked to pay for a higher level of park service than existing users currently receive. Through some brief conversations with staff in the period that followed, there is some indication that those concerns may be unfounded, although no formal analysis has yet been provided. While the association is not quite certain that a new home buyer or a new business will not be asked to pay for a higher level of service than already exists, I'm not here tonight to express an opinion one way or another on the proposed fees. However, I am here to let you know that the association will continue to monitor these fees, the use of the fees, and continue to work with staff on this and any subsequent capital planning to ensure that the four principles described earlier are adhered to. And with that, I just want to thank you very much for your time, and thanks staff for continuing to engage in open dialogue with the association, and we look forward to continuing to work forward with them in future months. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jackson. To the council, would we be ready to proceed? Okay. I close the public hearing on agenda item 26, and we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve item 26.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, second, please vote. Agenda item 26 is approved with a 6-0 vote. Thank you. We move to agenda item 27. I open the public hearing on agenda item 27, and we will have a short presentation from town staff.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis and council members. I'm Kathryn Lorbeer, principal planner. Staff has processed a request to amend the general plan. The request was considered a major general plan amendment because it involved more than 40 acres of non-residential uses. It's my understanding that the applicant would like to revise the request to only 39 acres of regional commercial. Major general plan amendments require an affirmative vote of at least two-thirds of the members of council, so that would be five of the seven. Denial of a major amendment or approval of a minor requires a simple majority vote. The focus of tonight's meeting is for the town council to consider taking action on the request. As you know, this item was continued from your February 13th meeting. You recently received some data on Wednesday about commercial retail supply. One of the sheets contains some raw numbers generated from various sources, and the other data sheet provides a rough analysis. This graphic shows the location of the request at the southeast corner of Higley and Riggs The Planning Commission heard the item on December 4th and passed a motion with a vote of 5 to 2 to recommend keeping 15 acres of regional commercial and changing the remainder to residential. Staff is recommending denial of the request based on the goals and policies in the general plan, which include the lost opportunity for commercial and employment uses in the area, support for non-residential uses in the Santan character area, the significant growth anticipated at buildout, and the good accessibility of the site at arterial roads and a road of regional significance. Staff is here tonight to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Because this is, I think, the third time the town council has listened and talked and has had some dialogue, to the applicant, we have six individuals that wish to speak. Would you like to hear their comments first, or would you like to have some comments first?
Mayor, I think we could save time. If the citizens who would like to speak went first, then we can go, and we don't have to then deal with rebuttal and, you know, coming back and forth, if that's okay with you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook, there are six that wish to speak. And to the council, we want to make sure that those who have come and taken the time have adequate time, but I think in looking at some of the names some have presented, and so I'm going to ask if we could have those who wish to speak have a two-minute estimated duration. Does that work for the council? Okay. And to those who are coming to speak, hopefully that'll work, and we'll see if it does. And so Vice Mayor Cook, at this time, if you could announce, and then, Mark, as you monitor, there's a yellow light that goes on when you're approaching, 30 seconds before the two minutes?
Correct, Mayor. 30-second warning is the yellow light.
And it'll be the same as you come forward. If you could state your name, and if you are a Gilbert resident, please.
Mayor, we'd like to welcome Brian King to the podium, and on deck will be TJ Tillman.
My name is Brian King. I am a town of Gilbert resident. Just have a few things I want to speak about here, is I've been here a few times on items that have happened in South Gilbert, and I truly feel that South Gilbert has not been represented very well by the council. I spoke here in 2007 about this issue, and I'm back again. We're going to be heard in South Gilbert about what the majority of the neighborhood actually wants. We are against the amendment here. If you know the area, the density is there residentially, but we do have no commercial retail down there at all. And at this time, if we don't do this at this location, where's it going to go in South Gilbert? If you look at the area, Higley and Riggs, it's heavily traveled by Queen Creek, South Chandler, and Gilbert. It's time now for commercial retail in this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we'd like to welcome TJ Tillman, and on deck will be Bill Brothers.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. And there are a few key points that I would certainly like everybody to take away tonight from a planning perspective for the town as we reach buildout, and also from the perspective of the residents in southeast Gilbert, including myself. I am a resident of Gilbert, and I live in that area. I think the argument has been made from Vestar and the representation for Vestar that the statistical data is not there to support this type of, this type of commercial building or this type of commercial development. I would be, I would encourage that we don't necessarily take the word of the people that are representing Vestar on their word without any kind of independent study, as we had mentioned prior in a previous meeting, and I guess that study hasn't happened. But I think it would behoove us to get data from somewhere else, and I would also encourage us to take, take the advice of the town staff. That's why we pay them. That's where some of our tax money goes, is to pay staff as the experts to determine whether this is a viable option for us or not. And my understanding is that it's a resounding yes from town staff that this is a viable option for us to have commercial development down there. I would also question the motives of the people that are for or against this. If we look at Vestar, they're, they're obviously a for-profit organization, and that's fine. But I would suggest that the interests of the residents down there are more long-term, less short-term about getting a quick gain, because we have our families down there. We live down there. That's, that's, that's where we're planning on staying, for the most part. And I certainly think that we should consider those things. I think that there's a lack of communication with the residents in that area. My understanding is that there were two meetings that were held, joint meetings with the residents of Seville. I don't know if this was brought up at all in those meetings, but the people that I've spoken to in all of those neighborhoods aren't familiar with what's going on right now. I think that there may have been some letters sent out, but I don't think that was sufficient communication. Can I say a couple quickly? Okay. Finally, if we're looking at buildout, if we're looking at what happens, I read an article in the paper the other day that talks about how flush the town is with cash right now, and a lot of that was a result of the impact fees and the development fees that we've had coming in from home builders. Once that's gone, how do we support the services that the residents are going to need? I feel like we, we have to have those commercial properties available as a sales tax revenue base to support us when we're not receiving those impact fees anymore. And I would strongly encourage Mayor and council to consider those things. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we'd like to welcome Bill Brothers to the podium, and on deck will be Kathy Tilke.
I don't have Al to help me load this. Usually Al Ward would be helping me, but he's not here anymore. Sorry about that. I've been practicing my timing. Okay, my name is Bill Brothers, resident of Gilbert. I guess I have to present this. Okay, I'm one of the residents down under on the south side of Gilbert. Remember us, we're the ones about to be burned from this rezoning effort. I'd like to talk about property rights. Yes, property owners have many rights, but these rights are not unlimited. If I discover oil in my backyard, are you going to allow me to rezone it and start drilling? Of course not. It hurts the property values of the other owners. So why would you consider rezoning for Vestar on the same basis? Right? It doesn't make any sense. It's going to hurt all the property values in Santan area. Rezoning this land goes against the will of the residents for over a decade, even building houses here with the expectation that the site will develop into a regional commercial center. If the land was zoned residential, many residents wouldn't have, would have considered building elsewhere. Lower demand is lower value. Rezoning the land will hurt the property values in the Santan area. The argument that you feel compelled to rezone the land based on property rights is not applicable. Next thing I want to discuss is retail revenue. During a prior town council meeting, the observation was made that increasing retail options does not increase retail spend. And this is a sound point. I hadn't considered this before. This is excellent. But I'd like to ask you to consider this, that although the total retail spend will not increase, the location of the retail options will determine where the money goes. If you don't have the option to spend in South Gilbert, where will the money be spent? I'll tell you. Who wants to drive into 202 traffic when you simply take an easy stress-free drive over to Queen Creek Center? A lot of people would rather drive in the wrong direction than drive into congestion. Queen Creek and Chandler are good neighbors, but make no mistake about it, Gilbert's in competition for them with retail tax revenue. Next topic I want to touch on is free markets. The free market has a requirement of liquidity and an ability to enter. It's harder to think of a bigger barrier of entry than to rezone this land and put houses on it. Furthermore, assets must be liquid to sustain an active market. That's why we have a stock market and a second order of liquidity and options market. When you have no liquidity and an impossible barrier of entry, it is by definition not a free market. If, if the free market states this land must be an RV park, so be it. The barrier of entry will be low enough that enable a higher value of future use to be determined by the free market. You have the choice to support a free market by retaining the original zoning, or you can take part in a heavy-handed effort by the state to eliminate competition to the detriment of your constituents. Last thing I want to touch on is geometry. Some would argue since the area covered by Higley and Riggs is only half a circle, it'll never cover as much ground as the RC centers up north. As you may recall, the area of the circles pi times the radius squared, this means that if you have a circle twice the radius, it'll actually cover four times the area. But if, let's take this geometry concept, apply it to a commercial radius, which is simply the likelihood of where a shopper is going to go to shop. If you look at the centers up north versus the center up south, you can do a quick calculation, basic math, everybody should be able to do this. The area is 70% larger in this area from Higley and Riggs. You cannot argue that you have 70% less population density in South Gilbert than you do up in North. So it's crazy to make that same radius assumption for every commercial center. So in conclusion, Higley and Riggs serves 70% more area than the commercial centers up north. Zoning is not a free market because there is a barrier to entry, a big barrier, impossible for all practical purposes. Retail spending is going to our neighbors now. It's going to get worse. And finally, property owner rights do not trump the voter-approved plan. Thank you for your indulgence.
Bill, thank you, and I think you get the MVP for some fabulous PowerPoint presentations. And I realized last time you came that you did have three minutes, so thank you for, during your rest, to condense, and we'll continue. Thank you.
Mayor, we'd like to invite Kathy Tilke to the podium, and on deck will be Janay Mobbbee.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Kathy Tilke, representing the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce, and I am a Gilbert resident. And gee, thanks for letting me go after that presentation. That's a hard one to follow. I'm here this evening in relation to a letter that we sent you back in September. And that letter had to do with downzoning and some of the concerns that the Gilbert Chamber has in regards to when an employment area, whether it's retail, office, industrial, that's planned, comes before you and wanting to change that into residential. That's our definition at the Chamber. It may not be an official town definition, but we consider that a downzoning. My board and my public policy committee asked me to come today. We didn't take an actual position on this property or any of the other ones that are coming before you at this point, because we believe that we've... coming before you at this point, because we believe that we've talked in detail to you all and to the staff about the importance of preserving property for our future. Once it goes away to residential, you don't get it back. I was in a presentation the other day with Gilbert Leadership, and Kelly Patton was there, she was talking a little bit about the future of what land we have available for development. And I, and if I say this wrong, Kelly, I apologize, but I believe she said, "We only have 7% of the land that's left today for economic development." And so, once we start whittling away from that, our long-term sustainability is going to be harder and harder for us to come to grips with, as was mentioned earlier. Once that residential growth and all of this growth that's happening now stops, us as businesses and residents are going to pick up the difference in taxes if we don't have the right mix. So, I know you have a very hard decision before you today, I hope that you'll be looking at the big picture as well. I, I totally respect Vestar and all the projects that they brought into this community, I respect their surveying about what could go there as far as retail's concerned, but that doesn't mean other opportunities for employment couldn't go down south as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, we'd like to welcome Gina Mobbey to the podium, and on deck will be Kevin Ramsey.
Good evening, I'm Gina Mobbey. Where there is no vision, the people perish. Several years ago, Vestar had a vision of the corner of Riggs and Higley as a great location for commercial business. They felt so strongly that they requested and pursued a zoning change from residential to commercial. The council got on board with that vision, and the rezoning request was granted. The local builders got on board with that, and began to share that vision with potential home buyers in the surrounding subdivisions of Seville and Greenfield Acres. For the last nine years, the residents such as some of us in the room have been watching our area in South Gilbert grow, mainly filling with houses and schools, looking forward to that day. Fast forward just a couple of years, and you find a nation experiencing a recession, and as we know, the Phoenix area was hit particularly hard. Many of us lost our jobs, our homes, neighbors, and dreams of what was possible for our lives there in South Gilbert. Over the last year, the tide has turned, and in the last six months alone, hundreds of houses sitting vacant for years have been purchased. Employees have been rehired, and neighbors have been recovering. For reasons that they have already stated, Vestar now wants to go a different direction. It's in their best interest to take advantage of the tidal wave of home sales and rezone back to residential. We've spent the last few months at the meetings like this comparing statistics, projections, numbers, et cetera. And over these months, while we've been having this discussion, more residents have continued to come into the area, and word is spreading about the proposal. Our area is not shrinking, it is growing. Council, Vestar has no vision anymore for the type of businesses that we would like to see, but not the residents, and I hope not the council. I submit to you that the right thing to do is not to rezone, but hold to the vision. I look around that area, and I'm excited. We have a new restaurant locally, it's small, it's Blue 32, it has an hour wait, even on weeknights just to get in. Please allow the zoning to stay the same, let them pass the property rights on to the builders who do have the vision. These are the people with the vision and clout and motivation, they are there, we are here. Please don't interrupt the resurrection of South Gilbert, let us grow, and, and let their request go. This is not an emergency, this is an investment in our future. Don't close us in, let us blossom into the Santan vision. If you don't stand up for us and the local residents, who will?
Thank you.
Mayor, we'd like to invite Kevin Ramsey to the podium, and then I would like to, for the record, there are two individuals that did not want to speak, but they were against Agenda Item Number 27, that was Julie Hackamac and David Hackamac.
Mayor and Council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I recently just moved to South Gilbert about two months ago, and almost moved there about five years ago, but hesitated due to the lack of resources around that area. The way I look at it is, it's continually becoming almost a house farm, and I hate to use that, that terminology, but everywhere you drive, all you see is more and more homes being built, and nothing around it. And to all the speakers that have spoken tonight, all the emphasis on what they're saying is true. We have to drive five, six, seven miles to go anywhere to eat. Blue 32, to the, the point, is an hour wait. I hate to see that area just become continually saturated and end up in the same situation that we did six years ago, where it was just nothing but houses, people flood, you know, flee the place, it was a ghost town, there was nothing there to draw people in. And, and to the point, if we do this now, and we don't, we don't rezone it, or zone it to commercial, we are stuck. We are stuck. We're just going to have houses and nothing else to go to. So I please, please, you know, hope that you guys can make the right decision, and look out for the members, or the, the residents that are in that area. So, thank you.
Thank you. To our applicant, please.
Mayor, thank you, if we can just take a minute here and figure out how to cue this up, would be great. Good evening, Mayor and Council, did you want me to proceed, or are there others that want to speak, or? Are we on?
You are on, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and Council members, thank you for this opportunity to share a few thoughts with you about this general plan amendment. For the record, my name is Ralph Pugh, and my office address is 1744 South Val Vista Drive, Suite 217 in Mesa. We've been in front of you plenty of times, and we do not intend to rehash the, the belabored statistics we went over with you last time about traffic counts, population growth, and those type of things. And out of respect to our neighbors who are here tonight, let me just say this much on behalf of David Larcher and Vestar Company, no one wants to develop a center here more than them. And the fact that this land should remain commercial and undeveloped will not change a thing for our friends in the South Gilbert area, in the Santan area. You could decide tonight to vote to deny this amendment. The net result of that is, nothing will change. This project, this property will not develop for the uses for which we all thought it would. But in an effort to listen, we tried to do that, every once in a while we try to listen, we have prepared a plan tonight that preserves on this corner 15 acres of commercial uses, and allows 39 and a half acres to go to residential development. And I think the important thing for all of us is to take just a minute and look at, what does that mean? I think sometimes we talk acreage, and not everyone understands what that means in size. First of all, let me go back to this and just make a gentle reminder to everyone here, including our friends from Seville and other places. The corner of Riggs and Higley today has 55 plus 20 plus 5, which is 80 acres of commercial zoning. That is more acreage than you would see at a freeway interchange with Val Vista or even Gilbert Road. It's never envisioned to grow to that extent. We think Riggs and Higley should have commercial uses, but they should be on the scale of what could reasonably be expected. Here is the best way to describe that, let me just click right through this to the next one. Here's the map that we're proposing tonight, that accurately moves the general plan amendment out to the middle of the road, and the yellow would be the residential for 39.5 acres, and 15.24 acres on the corner. If, if any of you are inclined, which we hope some of you are, to recommend approval of this case, the motion would be on this exhibit, not on the entire acreage. We are amending that tonight, and again, listening carefully to what our neighbors have to say. Here then is really what can happen. The five acres on the northeast corner can develop for 45,000 square feet of space, that's, that's a lot of space in and of itself. That's shops and a couple of restaurants. Our neighboring corner on the southeast, which everyone seems to conveniently forget and never mention in these meetings, is 20 acres. That's 190,000 square feet of potential retail space. Six pads, inline shops, restaurants, what we call sub-major tenants, that's a big project, that's bigger than your typical shopping center anchored commercial center. So there you go with 190, plus 45 on the other corner, that's over 200,000 square feet. Now, if you were inclined to approve our request tonight and leave 15 acres on the corner, that's about 107,000 square feet of space. So at the, at the end of the day, we end up with 342,000 square feet. I honestly don't know what more our neighbors want from us, or anybody else. You can build more restaurants and more shops than can possibly serve that area on this size of land. To give an idea of what that looks like, as many times we talk acreage and people don't really understand that, let's take, everyone knows this, when you came to this meeting tonight, any of you who came in on Warner and Civic Center Drive, where the Lifetime Fitness is, you've all seen that, you all know what that is, that's roughly 16 acres. That's the size of what we're talking about, that's a lifestyle center with shops and restaurants, it's huge. That's 16 acres. Here's another more typical one, this is Fry, excuse me, the Fry Center at Higley and Chandler Heights, right in the Santan area. This now is a much more traditional inline shopping center with pad sites on the front edge, but still, that's roughly 15 acres. Here's a good one, let's take another city for example, this is Ray and the 101. This is a nice little 17-acre site, Starbucks, Whole Foods, Paradise Bakery, Panda Express, banks and offices. That site can accommodate plenty of uses that the neighbors in this area need. Here's another one, this is Chandler, this is Ocatillo and Alma School Road, that's only 12 acres, but here you have Divine Bistro, fabulous place by the way, Holiday Inn, some law offices, retail offices, and medical suites. Here's a great one, if you haven't been up to Mesa, on McDowell and Power, the shopping center kind of on the right-hand side of that, next to the canal, is about 16 acres. We did that center years ago, it's a fabulous little center. It has Divine, Chipotle, CVS, it's got a boutique, the Golden Spoon yogurt, it's got Pacino's Italian, fabulous place. So, here you have examples of what can be done, so I, I really want our neighbors to understand, we're not here trying to take away the chance for commercial, we're leaving enough commercial, not only on our site, but the other two sites, to accommodate the whole area. A quick thought, as we sit in this meeting tonight, think about the west side of Gilbert Road as we all sit here tonight. That west side is commercial, and is about 55 acres. Drive in at some time. It's half-occupied, half-developed. That's the magnitude of what we're being asked to keep at Riggs and Higley, when 55 can't even develop at a high-intense urban area across the street. Our goal and our request, Council members, is, please let this request reflect an accurate balance of commercial in that area. Vestar is your first, and frankly, preeminent retail partner. They came to this town and built two major shopping centers before freeways existed, before many of the homes existed, and they had that vision and did it. We would encourage you to please recognize this and, and understand too, these allowed uses, this is interesting, these, all these uses are typical of a commercial center, banks, daycare, dry cleaners, urgent care, hotel, artisan manufacturing. I just want to clear up one thing for my friend Kathy Tilke, and that is, regional commercial does not allow the employment-type uses that I'm sure the Chamber is looking for. Employment is limited in the regional commercial to artisans, that means folks who build things with their hands and hand assembly, not big manufacturing facilities or huge job places. So, we think that the uses we're proposing on 15 acres would be great. We've examined all these other, these aren't the whole list, but these are the ones that have arguably a chance to be done. None of them really worked very well, unless someone's going to come out here and build a college or university, which we don't think's going to happen at this location, hospitals already taken in the area, farmer's market. I think we should take these 15 acres, Mayor, and do something creative with it, and that's what we're willing to do. I won't bore you more, the Santan area has 250, and again, in deference to our friends who just spoke, the Santan area where they live today has 250 acres of vacant commercial land. Why in the world do we need to keep 55 more at this spot? We believe 15 will do it, and I'd just like to add one comment. If all the statistics that both we have said, as the gentleman earlier wanted our statistics verified, fine, all the statistics that the neighbors have shared, really at the end of the day, none of that matters, because if a major big-box user or other retailers wanted this site, they'd have been here. Vestar has spent 10 years marketing this. They fought a referendum. The irony is, we fought a referendum of citizens who opposed this case to go residential for the development agreement. That had to go to a public election, and here we have citizens tonight saying, "Let's keep it, let's do, let's keep 15 acres, and let's make this corner possible," and hope that that can develop and be used. We are not shortchanging the neighborhood, we're providing an acreage amount that can work. Mayor, there's probably other questions I ought to answer, oh, one was, someone asked us, "How many properties has Vestar purchased that they haven't developed?" They've developed 19 power centers in the state of Arizona, over 13 million square feet. There's only two pieces that they've ever purchased that they didn't build on, and this is one of them. This was not bought 10 years ago to speculate and sell to home builders today. That wasn't even on the agenda. Mayor, thank you. I'll be quiet, I know you've heard enough of this case, be happy to answer questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To Council members, are there questions at this point, are we ready to have some discussion?
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Now that the applicant has amended their application to be a minor zoning amendment and only require, to, to do what's now proposed, only require a majority of, of the vote, the public that commented may, it may have caught some of them by surprise, it might be appropriate now that the proposal's been amended, to at least give the opportunity for anybody who wishes to address the new proposal, the opportunity to do so. There may not be any interest, but in the interest of fairness to those who, who perhaps spoke on a, a total conversion of 55 acres, they may have some additional comment to make with the proposal now that it's been presented.
Okay, thank you. So what you're recommending is if someone at this point still wanted to speak, the public hearing is open, fill out a card, bring it up, and we could still have them speak?
Mayor, members of council, that's correct, and it may be somebody who spoke before, however, they were, they thought they were addressing a much larger proposal.
Thank you. Council, you okay with that? So if someone wished to make additional comments, you could fill out a card again, and we can, can have you come back up. I did hear Councilmember Daniels, you were thinking that we missed one, is that correct? And so, is it?
I saw.
Les Presnick, did you wish to speak on this topic?
Because he did sign the card for number 28, not 27.
And I apologize.
Okay, please. Les, in case you missed it, because this is the third time this come to the council, we've had citizens with two minutes.
Okay. I can barely introduce myself in two minutes, but I'll do my best, Your Honor. My name's Les Presnick, I am a Town of Gilbert resident, and I won't give you my address, but I live in the far northwest part of town, so this is not my neighborhood, but I just want to come and make a few comments. We've heard a lot about property rights, we've heard a lot about things changing in this part of the world. The reality is, the Indian Reservation was there when Vestar came to us and asked us to rezone that property for a power center, all right? So that hasn't changed. The general plan has not changed the zoning at all. And when we went through the general plan amendment, or the general master plan a couple of years ago, we never heard from Vestar or any of the other landowners down there to change this property. Now, there needs to be commercial down there. 55 acres is probably too much, that I will agree with. Will a power center ever come in there? Probably not. All right? Demographics change, the market changes, but 15 acres is not enough. 15 acres won't give you a Walmart, a super Walmart. 15 acres won't give you a Walmart, a Super Walmart, it won't give you a Super Target and that complex, unless those dynamics have changed dramatically in the last few years. They always said they needed at least 20 acres. So if, if you downzone all but 15 or 16 acres of this, you are limiting what can go in there and what will go in there and what will be available to serve the community. I'm going to give you one example of why it's your responsibility to protect the vision and the economic development of this town. Not too many years ago, we were told that there was a corner in this town that would never develop commercially, and so that we should rezone significant portions of that for apartments and multifamily housing. All right? We were, we turned that, please, just a few more seconds. We turned that request down not once, but at least twice. All right? The corner that I'm talking about is the southwest corner of Cooper and Baseline, where that huge power center sits on the Gilbert side of Baseline that includes Coles and Old Navy and any number of commercial developments. That is an economic engine in this town. Yet we were told by zoning attorneys that that would never develop because of the Walmart catted corner across from it. We held our ground because we felt that that would give us the opportunity to have that develop commercially. That's why I say, I don't think 55 acres is ever going to, to develop here, but 15 acres is too little. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook, we have had three more requests. One, a repeat and two news. So continue.
That's correct. We'd like to invite and welcome Gina Mayby to the podium. And on deck will be Darlene Clarkson.
Thank you so much for suggesting and giving me the opportunity to, to speak to the amendment. And I appreciate that Vestar is trying to come up with what they think would be an amicable agreement and adjustment. But my question to them would be, I remember the first time I stood, sat here and listened to a presentation by Mr. Pugh about how useless this piece of land was, and I remember that term, useless. And if they have such a great vision now for 15 acres, I want to know what law has prevented them from doing exactly that with 15 of the 54 acres that they already have? I don't believe they have a true vision. I believe they could have put those things. No one, I don't understand what has prevented them from doing exactly that with those 15 acres. I really, again, believe it's they need to take advantage of the opportunity of the housing market. I know that you've received some emails, haven't you? Letters, phone calls from the residents. Have you received five, 10, 15? When have you last received so many contacts from the residents? My question to you is, how many of those residents are demanding more housing? How many of them are saying, "Please, please, bring more residents in the area. We don't want any restaurants. We've got Taco Bell. We've got Walgreens. Do you know what we're getting a mile from here? We're getting a mini storage. We can't eat there. We can't go enjoy and take our families there." So I, again, I don't think that they're right people for the job. Do they do a beautiful job? Yes. Have they done it in the past? Yes. But do you owe so much loyalty to them because they came and did some great work, which was contracted? They didn't do it for free. Do you therefore have an obligation to them now over the residents? Why do we want the whole chunk of 54? I went back and forth, and I'll tell you why. Because that's it. It's the last one, and there's no going back. We can, if we keep the chunk, we have room for more vision. But if we cut it off now and close it into homes and have that little 15-acre deal, which we already have all around, he showed you, we have the 15-acre deals. We want the opportunity to grow. And so if we close this off and divide it, the door is closed forever.
Thank you.
Mayor, we'd like to welcome and invite Darlene Clarkson. And on deck will be Heather Egler. My correction, both Heather and Darlene do not want to speak, but they are both against.
Thank you. All right, to council, questions or dialogue? Let's have some dialogue. Councilmember Cooper will just go down real fast. I'll see how the council feels, and then we'll have a sense of what we need to do.
Thank you, Mayor. Since the last time we discussed this, staff pulled together some figures for me, basically, and I went ahead and crunched those numbers. And it was really something I did to see, just for myself, if I felt like the applicant was, had a fair assessment of the market down there, and because I, I kind of had a hunch that they were on the right track. Those numbers, again, the data came from town staff, from legitimate sources. To me, just based on my rough analysis, and I'm not, in, in any case, an economic consultant or anything like that, but based on what I could tell, they seemed to make the case for, or to agree with the case that the applicant had. I also looked at our own master plan, of transportation master plan that we're putting together right now, and I looked at the traffic counts that are there currently and that are proposed at Build Out, and I didn't see them justifying a major 55-acre site of commercial either. And I went through all the corners in town that have the, have those major centers already. And even, even at Build Out, under the best circumstances, the traffic counts that are proposed, even on Riggs, that everyone is expecting to be a major road, even those traffic counts don't justify the kind of centers that would fill 55 acres. And I'm not sure, I, I have been in this industry. I actually own two small businesses that are in a lifestyle center, and I'm very familiar with this kind of a project, and I just cannot get to where the residents are on this. And I mean, you can, you can't eat there now, and you won't be able to eat there in the future unless you're trespassing for a picnic. I mean, because that's kind of what, the way I see it as of right now. That being said, I am perfectly willing to entertain what the applicant has proposed tonight. I think there, you've still got 40 acres, basically, of commercial at that corner, and there are very few, if any, corners in the entire southeast valley, especially that are miles away from a freeway. I can't think of any, actually, that have 40 acres and that are fully developed, thriving centers. And as I said last time, I don't believe that we want to have a bunch of half-empty centers around town. I think we want thriving, full centers, and the only way to do that is to make sure that we don't overbuild. So anyway, you kind of know where I'm at. I feel like the compromise kind of application tonight would be fine, but I'm, I was with the original proposal.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you, Mayor. I feel much differently than Councilmember Cooper does on this particular issue, and I think I've probably now stated my opinion multiple times, so I will keep it short. I believe that South Gilbert really is in its infancy, and now is not the time for us to be giving away opportunities. Once we have homes there, that will never, ever change. And yet, I would prefer to see a vacant lot in South Gilbert with opportunity and with potential than to close the door. In part of my conversations with some of town staff, some of our economic development team, and also with the applicant, I really want to know if residential is the only thing that this corner is good for. And I got some definitive answers, different from staff and the applicant, but now I'm seeing something different than what I was told even just a week ago, that housing is the only thing that, that is viable on this corner, and now I'm seeing something different. I'm not ready to close the door, Mayor, on potential commercial in this community. I still think that Gilbert is, is growing. We have great vision for this community. Our general plan leads and guides us, and again, I, I would prefer that we keep our options open.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I respect the, the analysis that Councilmember Cooper brings. I think he's got some subject matter expertise in this, and I, and I definitely respect that. I think that is kind of how my brain is wired. What's the right thing? Is it too much, too little? I mean, what, how, how do the, what do the numbers really justify in this? Is something I look at, and definitely also sense a little bit of the conflict in the, you know, the Santan character area. On the one hand, we want low density, but then this is a, a play for something that requires a higher density to really sustain, you know, its viability long-term. We know that that's kind of the crux of the issue, so I don't, I'm not sure if we're asking for something that's realistic in, in both cases, because you can't really have both of those, at least at the quality of level that you would like longer term. So I, and I also respect the comments of Mr. Presnick in terms of a 20-acre build, because, you know, I would support the 15-acre, split-the-baby approach here, but I think that's wise input that we've just received from former Councilmember Presnick on, on 20 acres, and would certainly support that if the applicant is, is willing to do that. But Mayor, that's, that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook?
Mayor, thank you. As I said before, we don't have a crystal ball as it relates to that particular property and what will happen five years or 10 years from now, and I fully, you know, support keeping it, you know, regional commercial. But I do want to make a comment. I did spend a lot of time reviewing Councilmember Cooper's analysis, and as I went through it, there's tremendous amount of assumptions. I spent some time with staff, and even, even some of the development acreage that he uses as a number, staff indicated that, you know, that's probably about 70% accurate as it relates to those numbers. And again, Councilmember Cooper's analysis assumes that the only thing that is on his analysis is retail, but we know that there's at least 60-plus types of use cases that can be put on those particular parcels of land. But as the calculation is only geared toward retail, which basically assumes about, you know, 80% of assumable taxes all on retail. So again, I can't see that being the true numbers of what that could be. Again, it's a forecast, which I appreciate, but the forecast really is heavily about retail. And then some of the factors that he uses increases it, you know, 30% from what we have today to what the future. So again, his analysis, which I appreciate that he did, to me, doesn't justify my change in my vote.
Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I, I also reviewed that analysis, and I looked at the spreadsheet that staff provided, and the numbers that were in Councilman Cooper's spreadsheet were pretty much copied and pasted off of there. So I don't think any of that was, and I, I know staff's on the other side of the issue, so if we suffer from confirmation bias, and we all do, we see what we want to see, we're all subject to that, I would think their numbers would be skewed the other way, but they do tend to support the previous study that's been done by a professional firm, Elliott Pollock &amp; Co. And just the comment on the 80% of taxes, well, actually, locally, pretty much all of our taxes, we collect locally, are retail taxes, so that's virtually everything. So that's a pretty good assumption as far as revenues and sustainable, our sustainable future. I want to respond to another few comments I heard tonight. I, I think one of the ways we show people we're listening is by considering what they say and then giving a response that's thoughtful, so I want to do that. And if I don't hit, I don't want to spend all night, so I can't hit everyone's, but I just want to hit a couple things that I've heard a number of times. One is that, once this becomes one use, it can never become another. Now, I'll admit, it's hard to change a land use, but it's actually interesting comment, because in economics, land use is one of the resources that's easier to change from one use to another, once that commitment's been made. Redevelopment happens when there's enough demand for a use, and the, the man creates a price that's high enough to make it economically viable to redevelop it. And that, that happens, happens a lot. So that's, in contrast to that, in the, in the economics, typically you have things like, if you use the mil, if you use milk to make yogurt, you can't turn it back into ice cream later. So this is really something, it's important in economics to realize, that's not, not really true. The economics will drive it to what is most demanded. And that's what I hear a lot tonight, is about what, what people are demanding. And, and I'll just repeat this. It's one thing to say something, it's another to spend dollars that way. If the demand is there, the market wants to provide it, because quite frankly, that's how the market makes money. And that may sound like a bad thing, but that's how we all get the things we want and need in this, in this economy, is because the supply and demand does its, does its job. Another comment I hear over and over is about the general plan, and because voters supported the general plan, we should stick to it. I respect the general plan, you know, but I, I think there's an important point here. The general plan also provides on this corner, I want to give an example of how comprehensive and all the options this is provided for in the general plan, and I don't know if everyone realizes this. There are a lot of uses allowed on that corner under regional commercial, a lot. I'm going to give one example, and we'll just see if all the voters here who voted for the general plan, just ask yourself if you support this, because when you voted for the general plan, it was included in the uses. And that would be an RV park on that corner. That is allowed by rights. There's a lot of others. I don't know. There's probably a lot of things that people maybe wouldn't support, but they voted for it in the general plan. I'm just making the point that, I've read the general plan multiple times, I've read a lot of the Land Development Code, but even myself, I haven't read every word of it. And so, to just follow the general plan, word for word, I don't think that will even necessarily represent the will, a will of the people. We have to keep that in mind. So my main point is this, as a fiscal conservative, I am concerned about the long time, long-term sustainability of our community, especially without new taxes. Very much concerned about that. With that, I want as much retail in our city as possible. I've proposed other ideas to change the dynamics to lead to more retail, and I have ideas on that, and they would really change things. So I think we all want as much retail as possible. We share that goal. The disagreement seems to center around how much retail is possible. Who's right on this? Who, who knows? And admittedly, there is no crystal ball. We all agree. So we can't be perfect, but we can use the data, the facts, and do some analyses. The two analyses that I've seen done, one by a professional firm, and the other one that Councilmember Cooper worked with staff on, got the data from staff on, seem to indicate we have more retail than is sustainable in the long term in South Gilbert, especially if it develops at the low density South Gilbert is demanding. Okay? So unless we see increased densities to raise population, the consumer base is simply not there in the long term. So in my view, we can either choose to leave the zoning the way that it is, with, with more commercial than we need, and stifle the growth that will be needed to support the yet undeveloped commercial areas that we want to see developed, or, or we can accept some amount of reduction in commercial, which will be necessary to allow changes that will actually be the best way to support the development of the other lots, the commercial properties we want to see there. And I'll just point this out, I'm actually going to live in June, or July, maybe July, depends on how fast we build out there. But we've started construction on a home south, southeast, if I can get my, southeast of Higley and Riggs. And so this will be the closest corner to me, and my wife and I have the same concern. We want as much retail as possible there. We are concerned about that. But I will also admit, we also enjoy the quiet nature of the area, one of the things we're most excited for. And so I think, when, when we're in a low-density, low-traffic count area, we're going to enjoy the benefits of the quiet. We can't also, at the same time, enjoy all the high-density amenities we might want that, that we see in town. So that's just, that's just reality, in my opinion, and so I, again, we want as much as possible. What's possible is less than what's zoned. So with that, I support a, a reduction as proposed by the planning commission, which would be for the 15 acre, or to leave 15 and rezone 30, 39.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook, I also see for the record, there's, there was a document given to the council?
Yes, Mayor, we have received basically a petition where there are 56 residents in South Gilbert and Dora Trails that basically signed that they are not in agreement of going to residential and that they would like to keep it regional commercial.
Thank you. For the council, I haven't shifted, and I know we've already had two meetings, and so same comments, I would like to keep options open. And so at this time, let's close the public hearing on 27. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Please.
I'm
Please?
I move to approve the attached resolution for GP 13-07 Vestar, a minor general plan amendment, to change the land use classification of 39.5 acres of regional commercial to residential greater than 2 to 3.5 dwelling units per acre and to retain 15.24 acres of the overall 54.74 acre site at the southwest corner of Higley and Riggs Road for regional commercial land use classification.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, with that motion, second please vote. That motion does not pass with a 3-3 vote. Thank you. I open the public hearing on agenda item 28, and I understand there will be a summary Thank you. I did have a note and I wanted to clarify this. The note from town leadership was item 26 was a hearing-only, no action was necessary. Now, on my agenda on 26, it says hearing discussion, possible action by motion. So do we need to redo something?
Just an acknowledgement that there wasn't, you voted on nothing, is what happened.
But it was really fun and we had a good time. And good discussion on 26. Thank you. Okay, thank you. We continue on with 28.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Mike Malillo with the Development Services Department, Senior Planner. Item number 28 is case Z1302, Recovery Residences Text Amendment. Just to give the council background on this proposed text amendment, we've been working on this for quite some time. A focus group was formed back in the early summer of 2013. That focus group was made up of recovery residence operators, representatives from homeowners' associations, including the Congress of Neighborhoods here in Gilbert, a representative from the Planning Commission. And that focus group met on five different occasions to look at various options that would assist in drafting this text amendment. The Planning Commission discussed this item on three different occasions in study session between October and December of last year. And then finally, last month, the Planning Commission recommended approval with some modifications to the amendment, which are in the current ordinance that you see before you. These are the objectives of this text amendment. Basically, the first objective that we started out with is to maintain and protect the character of residents in Gilbert's neighborhoods. But we also want to protect the rights of persons with disabilities to obtain housing in the community. And we obviously want to be consistent with what Federal Fair Housing laws call for. We want to provide locations within the community for this legitimate use. And so we're establishing a new use classification and our objective was also to establish reasonable zoning regulations that will allow the operators of this use to function with minimal regulations and also avoid clustering or concentration. This shows you basically the top three bullet points are from the purpose statement in the text amendment for recovery residences. Really, no reason to elaborate much on that, except I would point out in the third bullet point, one of the key things that we are trying to do here is prevent a concentration of these facilities in any particular area. And that's why one of our standards calls for a 1,200-foot separation distance, which is exactly the same as we have for our group homes for the handicap. The bottom bullet provides the definition of the recovery residences. And so these are basically homes for individuals recovering from substance abuse. Our ordinance contains several important components. One is that registration is required. Zoning confirmation is required so that we are assured that these facilities are in the correct zoning districts. We have procedures that are laid out, which basically say that an operations and management plan need to be submitted with the registration. We have special standards that are contained in the ordinance, things like the occupancy, which would be a maximum of two persons per bedroom, except for the master bedroom, which would allow up to three, and then a total maximum occupancy of 11 individuals. We have the use definition, we have the glossary of general terms, and right there in the middle is the request for accommodation so that if these homes cannot meet the standards, they can also request a special accommodation, which is included due to the Federal Fair Housing Act. Staff is recommending approval as the Planning Commission recommended last month, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have on the amendment.
Thank you. We also, let's go ahead and hear from our town attorney, and then I'll see if the council
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Briefly, I'd like to give an overview of federal fair housing law and its impact on municipal zoning and land use. The Federal Fair Housing Act was passed, was part of the Civil Rights Act of 1968. At that time, the Fair Housing Act provisions prohibited discrimination on the base of race, color, sex, national origin, and familial status. They were, the Fair Housing amendments were supplemented, or the act was supplemented in 1998, or '88. And then again, in 1991, with the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act, which extended this protection under the federal law to persons with disabilities. And so that with the addition of the Americans with Disabilities Act, a person, individual, no individual with a disability shall by reason of such disability be excluded from participation or be denied the benefits of services, programs, or activities of a public entity, or be subject to any discrimination by the public entity. The Federal Fair Housing Act does not preempt, according to the Department of Justice, local zoning laws. But it does prohibit local governments, governmental entities, from making zoning or land use decisions or implementing land use policies that exclude or otherwise discriminate against protected persons, including those with disabilities. Both the Americans with Disabilities Act in 1991, and then of course, with subsequent case law, has held that individuals recovering from drug or alcohol addiction are disabled under the Fair Housing Act and the Americans with Disabilities Act. So they become a protected classification under these laws. Nevertheless, current users of controlled substances, persons convicted with the manufacture or distribution, sex offenders, juvenile offenders, are not considered disabled under the Fair Housing Act. The Fair Housing Act also does not protect individuals who present a direct threat to the persons or properties of others. However, this is an individual assessment, not a group assessment. So that it's contrary to law and inappropriate to say that this group of people as a whole constitutes a direct threat if they qualify under the federal law as a person with a disability. So under the Fair Housing Act, it's unlawful to implement policies or actions that treats groups of persons with disabilities differently than groups of non-disabled persons. In other words, while they note a policy or action might be unlawful, even if there's no appearance of discrimination on its face. It's unlawful under the FHA to take action against or deny a permit for a home because of the disability of the individuals who live or would live there. And finally, it's unlawful to make, to fail to make, a reasonable accommodation in land use and zoning policies or procedures, where doing so may be necessary to provide disabled persons with an equal opportunity to use and enjoy housing. So that federal fair housing law with the Americans with Disabilities Act has a clause within it that provides that regardless of the laws that are passed, with limitations, including the ones proposed in the ordinance today, persons qualifying as having that disability or being disabled can come and request a reasonable accommodation. And it's contrary to law to deny that accommodation, except under the circumstances I'm going to describe in a moment. So while the FHA does not prevent local zoning and land use authority, it only demands that it be exercised in a nondiscriminatory manner. In the context of recovery residences, local government may enforce any regulation that would apply to traditional family living arrangements, such as parking, lot density, or blight. So if individuals in these homes are violating the law by being too noisy, or vehicles are parked inappropriately, or parked on non-dustproof lots, those provisions can be enforced, just as they can in a traditional family or any other group arrangement. But the one important caveat is the request for reasonable accommodation. Under the Fair Housing Act, persons with disabilities are entitled to request reasonable accommodations when otherwise lawful rules or policies impact their ability to have an equal opportunity to use or enjoy their dwelling. Local governments may not refuse to grant such waivers and exemptions if they are reasonable. A requested accommodation is reasonable if it does not impose an undue burden or expense on the local government and does not create a fundamental alteration in the zoning scheme. Consequently, the provisions as set forth by Mr. Malillo, that were the discussions and the agreement, or the kind of the consensus reached by the focus group, are subject to reasonable accommodations under federal law. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmembers, we have 11 citizens that wish to speak. They're all in favor, they have marked four. And I'm going to just change the order slightly, you'll understand in a moment, and our citizens will too. We had an executive session tonight, and in an executive session, it's a setting where we receive legal counsel. And so we were able to see these presentations and there were some comments made. And now it's important that any of those comments that need to be presented to the public, we do so. But the 11 who are wishing to speak, there may be some of the dialogue based on the legal counsel that we heard, that I think you'll want to hear from the council members so that you may be able to make those comments related to what you'll hear. Since I started with councilmember Cooper last time, let's move up one. And councilmember Daniels, and this is more what I would call the 32nd version of feelings that we can just quickly state, and that may impact some of the comments that citizens would make, which means on 29 and 30, councilmember Taylor, I'm going to start with you first. But right now, councilmember Daniels.
Thank you, Mayor. Briefly, I just wanted to thank the, all the individuals and groups that participated in the town's process. Very helpful. I know the Planning Commission has seen this. We've seen it a couple times through their eyes, and I appreciate all the work that's been done. Mayor, I'm in favor of moving forward with the language that's been presented to us tonight.
Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. Also appreciate everyone that's worked on this, and the Small Business Alliance in particular, has been very helpful in giving good information on that. The only thing that I would just ask that maybe we, as a council, because generally supportive, I think it's heading in the right direction, but in maybe about 12 months, 18 months, we can just get a feedback on how's it going? And is there anything that we can do to help or improve, or, you know, fix, or address, or something like that? And would like to see that as part of, if we move forward in supporting that. And, you know, Patrick, I don't know if you want to weigh in on that, or Mike on that, just from your perspective, just so we can come back, revisit it, and if there's an opportunity, sort of give it a pilot feel, make sure that we've done the right thing, headed in the right direction and...
Sure. And I think that's a valid request that could happen.
Yes, Mayor, councilman Taylor, that's correct. You could vote up this proposal either way, but then direct staff to, if it passes, to come back in a year, 18 months, or two years and provide a report.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook?
Mayor, thank you. I remember when this first started about two years ago, and I remember meeting with the organization and almost feel like it was kind of the kickoff in connecting with the Small Business Alliance. The two things that I think of is that there is a need in our community for some level of service like this as it relates to transition. So the wonderful part about it is that there are organizations that can provide that service for our community. And then secondly, what's nice about the process is that it does allow, you know, a process of accountability as it relates to business licenses, which I really like because that allows us to keep track of these particular services in the town. So with that, I'm in very much the support of this.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I want to thank everyone also for the time. This is, I think this has been ongoing for more than a year. A lot of hours have been put into this. And this is quite an issue to grapple with. And so, you know, I'm not totally free of concern with the ordinance, but I do think on the net, it's a step in the right direction. Legally, we have to allow some reasonable accommodation. I think at the end of the day, the ordinance provides for that. Well, it's specifically written in the ordinance. So with that, I do also support councilman Taylor's thought that maybe we have some kind of a year in review, just to look at it and see how things have gone, if there's adjustments to be made. Because we are kind of pioneering some things here. From what I hear, there are other cities and towns that are still grappling with this and maybe don't have a clear policy on it. So I think that would be appropriate.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper?
I'm supportive.
And I am too. So let me just ask the 11 that wish to speak, if you could stand. And we do want to make sure, because you've taken the time to be here and you may want to make some comments, but two things can happen. One, for the record, we can make sure your names are read and included. With what you just heard from the council, do some, if you wish to still speak, please raise your hand. All right, so thank you. Vice Mayor Cook, could you still read the names for the record?
I would love to, Mayor. And again, all 11 submissions here were in favor. Evan Anderson, Brett Downs, Gonzalo Ardevide, Kevin Orkin, Thomas Ray, Mark Hernandez, Terry Murphy, Howard Pauline, Jeff Marsh, and Amy Mendoza.
Thank you. To those 11 citizens, thank you. We, part of the executive session tonight, it was emphasized how much time you spent and the valuable information you provided, and we thank you for that. You may be seated. I close the public hearing on agenda item 28, and I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve item 28.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, with that motion, second please vote. That's approved with a 6-0 vote. Thank you. 29 and 30 have some similarities, and so I'm going to open the public hearing on both 29 and 30 at this time. On 29, let me just start with councilmember Peterson. I think you just wanted to clarify, is that right?
Mayor, honestly, I'm sort of lukewarm on it. I just, that I recognize the intent of this change was to disallow peacocks. And if it's the intent of the council to do that, I don't have experience with peacocks, so I can't say one way or the other. But as I recall, councilman Ray was concerned about it and wanted to disallow them. But just by striking the term "peacocks," now it would just fall under the term of "other large bird." So if we want to exclude them, we need to add in excluding peacocks. So I'm just saying, I'm just pointing that out, because it's not meeting the intent of what we talked about.
Okay. Thank you. Mike, any comments you wanted to make related to peacocks before we would get into the larger picture?
Mayor, members of the council. Oh, you meant Mike, Mike Hamlet or Mike Malillo? I'm sorry. I'll render a legal...
Please, either Mike.
I'll render a legal opinion even when it's not asked for. The, I think councilman Peterson's comments are well-taken because...
The, I think Councilman Peterson's comments are well taken, because it does generate a little bit of confusion in the way, perhaps the way it's initially stated.
Thank you. Okay. So if we continue on with 30, when we get to 29 and 30, we can bring them together. I wanted to just take a moment, too. I did see Senator David Farnsworth here, our state Senator David Farnsworth, and we thank you for coming. I know at a state level, our topic on 30 is something that you're looking at statewide, and we thank you for your leadership. In moving to 30, we will ask Mike to give the quick overview. We have several that have requested to speak, and so after your overview, we'll move right into the discussion with citizens, having a chance to share their comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Case Z 1330 is also a text amendment proposed for the Land Development Code. I'll give you a little history on this. In September of last year, the town council discussed this proposed amendment. This amendment actually was part of a much larger amendment back in 2010, but at that time, the animal provisions were removed because of the peacock issue. And so back in September, you directed staff to initiate this text amendment. In November, the Planning Commission conducted the Required Citizen Review Meeting and initiated it. And then in February, the Planning Commission recommended approval with revisions. This table just gives you a little bit of a snapshot of the modifications that are being made. The table up at the top here is the existing table. So animal-raising non-commercial, which is where fowl falls in terms of use classification, is permitted in the SF-8 through SF-43 zoning districts, basically our larger, lower-density zoning districts. And then there are additional regulations. The proposed use regulations here would also add these, or this use, to the SF-7, 6, and SFD. So all of those are single-family detached, just a little bit different in lot sizes. And the Planning Commission added this limitation that it would only be permitted in these smaller lots, where the lot size is at least 6,000 square feet, because as you know, sometimes we have planned area developments which amend the lot sizes. The bottom portion of this table just gives you a little bit of a comparison and shows you, based on lot size ranges, 6,000 to just under 8,000 square feet, how many proposed numbers of fowl would be allowed on each of these lots. Currently, they are not allowed on lots smaller than SF-8. With this proposal, we would allow five, and so on. As we get up to larger lot sizes, the number of fowl would increase, and I basically ended at 40,000 square foot lot sizes. So you can see one of the main differences between what we have currently in the code and what we are proposing with this text amendment is that there really isn't much variation until you get to very large lots under the current code. And animal-raising noncommercial is not permitted on the smaller lots, whereas under the current proposal, we have basically a gradation scaling up in the number of animals as the lot size So the key changes in this text amendment are to add the smaller districts and have a limitation on the minimum lot size at 6,000 square feet. The number of fowl would be increasing based on the size of the lots. And the aviaries, which is another key component of this amendment, would have to be located within the building envelope or at least five feet from any property line, rather than the 100 feet from any property line, which really is extremely difficult for people to meet on most-sized lots in the community. Staff feels that the text amendment will allow residents greater flexibility in keeping and housing fowl on the medium to large-sized lots. We're recommending approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Let's go back to the peacock. I believe that from a town perspective, the feeling is the peacock is a little bit louder, and that's why on 29, the definition was addressed in 29. Is there any peacock discussion you wanted to have?
Mayor, council, this version of the ordinance actually includes the language that Councilmember Peterson has proposed, so it specifically excludes peacock from the definition of fowl.
Okay. And I'll just comment to the council members, the Lewis family is pleased to live a half a mile from the peacock house. And grandkids love to go on walks there, and it's far enough away where we don't hear the noise probably when they really get going, but it is a fun place. And if, for peacocks, anyone wants to see the peacock house and go see the peacocks, come on over to Lewis's and we'll walk you down there. But does that, with adding that, Councilmember Peterson, you'd be ready to proceed on 29 too?
Yeah, I just want to state, I'm a huge freedom-loving guy, but there is a place for regulation, and that is your rights end where someone else's rights begin. And people have the right to be able to take naps in their homes and not be overwhelmed with noise. And so we do have a noise ordinance, but it's very hard to enforce. So if that's correct, that these are a nuisance, I think I would support that. I think that would be an appropriate use of a land use regulation, so.
We'll talk roosters. All right, thank you. So, Mike, ask if any of us had questions at this point. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, can we go back to the slide that has the tables? Yes, that one. Very much appreciate all the graphics. Chickens and eggs. I was waiting for the Leghorn Foghorn graphic to pop up.
I did not include the chicken in the tracksuit in this presentation.
Oh, okay. Now you've done it. But I wanted to ask about the graphic here up in the top corner, because on the bottom you have, there's limits of fowl, but some eggs become fertilized and chicks happen. So how would, if we pass this as we have it, and someone has 10 chickens, and then all of a sudden chicks show up, right? You're over the limit, and what do we do in terms of enforcement and flexibility there for the little guys? You know, that might just push us over the limit here for a little bit.
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, this would be like many other issues that are zoning code-related and nuisance-related. So we would have our code compliance division go out and actually check the property and see how many numbers of animals they have on the property. We obviously have data on lot sizes, and that's easy enough to figure out from dimensions on lots. And so if they were over, they would be asked to remove the excess number of birds.
So even if it's, you know, five baby chicks, and they already have their 10 hens, and one of them has five eggs that are fertilized, and five chicks pop out, then the home would be cited?
One thing I would point out, not to really speak for our code compliance division, but as you probably are aware, they operate on a complaint basis. And so our code compliance staff doesn't actually go out searching for violations. If there were complaints on noise, on chickens that were roaming the neighborhood, you know, there would probably be some code compliance activity.
Mayor, maybe just a follow-up comment or a recommendation for us to think about on that? I think we can put a little bit of flexibility or should consider chicks. I'm not saying that we extend it so someone can start a chick farm, right, and use it as a commercial operation, but just flexibility for just recognizing the biology of chickens and what happens there. And as I was benchmarking a couple things relative to roosters, they kind of had a limit about four months. You know, once the rooster gets four months, then there's some ordinances that say, okay, that's enough, you know, let the rooster grow up, but then you still need to meet the limit. And perhaps we have some wording in here that gives flexibilities for chicks up to four months. That would include a rooster, to just, you know, recognize the reality of the biology here, so.
Councilmember Daniels?
Quick question for you, Councilmember Taylor. How do we verify the age of a...
Birth certificate.
Not your age, Mayor, the age of the chicken.
Fair question.
I don't disagree with you. I can imagine the heartbroken children as their chicks get taken away from them. But recognizing that we do have to have a way to enforce, and chicks don't make a lot of noise, so likely no one's going to get a phone call on the chicks.
I don't know that answer. Maybe there's someone that can help us on that. That's a fair question.
But let's keep that, and we might have some additional discussion. Unless, Mike, you had any feedback right now?
The only other thing I would add is that code compliance usually is not a, you know, they don't have heavy-handed processes, and they normally allow a time period to come into compliance, you know, 30 days or longer.
And so it might be too that unless that became a real issue, we might not even need to do anything, but, okay. Let's see, any other questions? Councilmember Peterson? Okay, so let's, with council's approval, we'll proceed with the citizen discussion. Now, there's a total of how many that wish to speak?
We have four that would like to speak, six that do not want to speak. Four of the six are against, and the other two are for.
Okay, so we could read the names in the record?
Could read the names in the record.
And was it four that wish to speak? Is it diversified, or is it...
They are all in favor.
Okay. All right, to the council, please.
I apologize, Mayor. One point of clarification that maybe Mike can help us with. If we are excluding peacocks, are we doing it just for the smaller lot sizes, so those that have peacocks now won't be, won't fall into that category? Is that, how would that work?
Mayor, Councilmember Daniels, anyone who has peacocks currently would be grandfathered in, obviously. And by removing peacock from the definition of fowl, no one would be able to have them on any size lots in the future in Gilbert. So we're not looking at being able to add peacocks to the smaller lots, no.
Thank you. To the council, I guess the question I was going to ask is we, would you like to go two minutes or three minutes for the four speakers? Two, okay. Vice Mayor Cook, we'll look for a two-minute presentation from the four speakers.
Thank you, Mayor. We would like to welcome and invite Kim Paltes to the podium, and on deck will be Meg Levinson.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmayors. My name is Kim Paltes. I am a resident of Gilbert. First of all, I'd like to thank you for being one of the communities in this state that has been so generous in allowing us to have chickens in our backyards. I think it's a great movement, you know, on various levels. Why I'm speaking to you today is regarding, again, the thank you for the building envelope of allowing aviaries within that building envelope as opposed to the 100-feet limitation that currently is in existence. You know, the property size I have, when I bought it, it was touted as, you know, an extra-large lot. But even on my extra-large lot, I would not be able to accommodate the aviary as it currently is written in town code. So I appreciate the idea of the aviary within the building envelope, and I thank you for that consideration. And roosters are, is another option that I am grateful that you're considering this evening, because roosters provide such a great benefit to the backyard chicken farmer as well. And, you know, living in the community that I live in, you know, we're back-to-back-to-back kind of, and, you know, we have cats and dogs, and, you know, and we all live, you know, we all coexist, but it's not quietly. And I would ask someone that was in disagreement of a rooster, you know, a rooster, you know, I can hear a rooster, you know, that's several hundred yards away, but I only hear it once or twice, or three times throughout the night, as opposed to just going out into my own backyard. You know, my neighbor that allows their chihuahua to, you know, live up on the balcony, you know, I can't enjoy my backyard in private without the dog barking. So I thank you for these considerations. I hope you move forward with them, and thank you.
Thank you.
We'd like to welcome to the podium Meg Levinson, and on deck will be Donna Bruce.
This is not a great big presentation, just some photographs of chicken coops, because there had been some concern during the meeting. There had been some concern during the meeting about chicken coops being an eyesore, and there were also concerns about noise and odor and unwanted predators and pests. And I think most of these things apply to any pet that you have in a backyard. Dogs, cats, chihuahuas get regularly taken by predatory animals. I just really thank you for considering this change to make it possible for people in lot sizes that are not humongous to take control of our food supply, to be able to have clean eggs, and pets.
Mayor, we'd like to welcome to the podium Donna Bruce, and then on deck, Gaylor Luth, if you'd like to speak.
Mayor and council, thank you for letting me come and speak. I'm not a Gilbert resident. I live in Chandler. My name is Donna Bruce. The reason I came is because my friends in Gilbert are going through what my friends in Chandler went through last year, and I didn't feel it was my place to go to the Chandler meeting, because I live in an HOA. Then when I found out that my friends who went to the Chandler meeting, that lived in traditional neighborhoods, were told they couldn't have chickens, I went down there and I talked to them, and I found out that what happened was that the HOAs came in at the last minute and bombarded them with letters from all over the country as to why Chandler should not have chickens. And I thought, I'm not going to make that mistake again. So when my friends asked me to come and speak, here I am. I have owned chickens in my past. I've usually kept five chickens in my little backyards. My backyards were never more than 6,500 square feet. Owning five little chickens in my backyard, just, it was a delight for me. It was never a problem with my neighbors. We did coexist. Neighbors next door had dogs, somebody else had cats who climbed the fence. We all got along. Something that I like to think about when I think about my traditional friends who want to have their chickens, we're a diverse society. We're told all the time that we're diverse. We all have different interests. And if I want to keep a little poodle in my HOA backyard, and somebody else would rather have chickens, you know what? Let them have their chickens. Seriously. And most HOA residents that I know don't care what goes on in the backyard. They like to see a nice front yard. They don't peek over somebody else's fence unless they've got nothing else going on in their life. Nobody cares. Keep it clean, keep it quiet, keep it happy. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd like to welcome to the podium Gaylor Luth.
Mayor, councilmen, I'm Gaylor Luth. I'm kind of the one that stirred up a lot of trouble all across the state with SB 1151, that's my bill. The senator came tonight just in support of us. We were very pleased when we heard Gilbert was really looking at changing some of the ordinances. I'm a former resident of Gilbert. I went to Gilbert Elementary, went to Mesquite Junior High, went to Gilbert High, and then, you know, when I was about 16, 17-years-old, my parents moved to Higley. And then when I was about 16, 17-years-old, my parents moved to Higley, which then they moved to Mesa. So I'm from here. My father used to run, manage the True Value Hardware when it was next door to Clement's Garage before it got torn down and they built the new one up the roadways. Gilbert was my roots. And that's why when I heard Gilbert was looking at lowering the ordinances and the lot sizes and all those kinds of things, we started coming to the meetings. We came and met with the planning commission on the former meeting and we were pleased at the response and the reception we were given. And we're just... We're hoping that Gilbert will set a precedence for so many other cities in being proactive and understanding that my generation and generations right next to mine, we want some of the things back that our parents had, our grandparents had. Even if it's not to the extent that they have... I mean, I live on a county island now. I own a small farm. I mean, I have 600-plus chickens on my property at all times. Not asking for that. We're hoping that the council will see a couple chickens in somebody's backyard, adjust for lot sizes, those types of things. They're not going to be a nuisance. You will always have somebody that abuses and somebody that misuses, but you have ordinances set up to handle those types of things. And we hope you consider... Truly, we hope you consider this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook, please.
Mayor, these individuals do not want to speak, but for the record, I'd like to enter their names. These four that I read are against Agenda Item Number 30. Diana Casey, James Casey, Debbie Kelly, and Derek Heatherington. And then I have two that also do not want to speak that are for Agenda Item Number 30. That's State Senator David Farnsworth and Bill Bachelor.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do we have questions that we wanted to ask or are we ready for some Let's have some dialogue. As I said, Councilmember Taylor, you start, please. And do the 30-second version and we'll see where we stand.
Okay. 30 seconds. Support it. Would like to see some wording to address the chicks. And also would like to see, as I mentioned previously, to kind of have a pilot feel to this, that we get a report back in maybe 12 months, if that's enough time, to see if we have it right and if there's any tweaks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook?
I do have a question for Mike, real briefly. In reality, the town of Gilbert has been pretty much in favor of chickens. It seems like this one is pretty much just lowering it from, I guess, the 8,000-square-foot lot size. We didn't have any availability for chickens to be there. But pretty much in general, Gilbert residents have had the ability to have chickens. Is that correct?
Mayor, councilmember Cook, a couple of things. Number one, we have had regulations that allow them on SF-8 and larger. The aviary requirements have been extremely difficult to implement because the chicken coops would have to be 100 feet from any property lines under the current code. So that makes it virtually impossible to have the chicken coops on the smaller lots. So that's a change. And as you mentioned, we are adding the ability on the three smaller districts.
So Mayor, I'm in favor.
And Mike, while you're at the podium, roosters came up. Summarize again how roosters fit into this.
The roosters, again, are from the original text amendment that we had proposed back in 2010. And I can just put the language up here very quickly. So it's basically Item C. So one rooster over four months in age would also be permitted with the exception of those kept for crop and animal raising commercial, which is a completely different use. And they would have to be kept in a manner so that they were controlled and they didn't violate the noise ordinance. And there are ways to do that.
Thank you. All right. Let's continue. Councilmember Peterson?
I have a quick question and then I'll get on my comment. Is it possible to change the way we're addressing the peacocks issue? Because Councilmember Daniels' question really... I'm embarrassed I didn't think of it, but my thought was to make sure we prohibited it on the smaller lots that we were now enabling to have other fowl. And I wasn't considering the fact, you said they'd be grandfathered in, but that seems like a hard thing to prove. That seems tough. And I'll just look to the council if there's still support. My thought was, though, we could turn it into an L-8, maybe? Can we add... We've got L-7 on those... Limitation Number 7 on those smaller SF... Let's see. 7, 6, and SFD. Could we have an L-8 that says, "Peacocks prohibited on these zoning districts"? Is that an option?
Mayor, councilmember Peterson, based on the language in the municipal code that we are proposing, so basically this language, peacocks would no longer be permitted because they are not foul.
Right. I'm saying instead of this...
Okay.
So we leave the way it was and instead of it, we have an L-8 on the smaller lots. Would that be a way to remove it from the small lots as far as peacocks, but still allow it on the lots it's been allowed on for these many years?
Yes, we could do that. And then obviously, we'd have to leave the foul definition the way it is currently.
And I ask that just to see if councilmembers would even support the ordinance under that idea. I'm not sure if there's support for it. We might have to go with completely eliminating peacocks to go forward. But I ask because I think I'd actually prefer that because I don't want to increase the regulation in any way. I just didn't want to allow it on the smaller lots. I think they're too noisy for that. But anyway.
Do we have an inventory of peacocks? I know that's going to be a tough question because... But have we had, from a code compliance perspective, do you have knowledge of where there have been complaints?
Mayor, I do not have that information. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Peterson, your neighborhood, because that would be an area where there could be peacocks, are there any?
I haven't heard any. So like I said, I don't have experience with them.
So I don't know. And it could be that, and this is similar to Councilmember Taylor's comment, that whatever we do decide, we could have a review in a year and see if something didn't quite work. The Peacock House is large enough and it's fine and will continue in our neighborhood. So I can still have your family members come and see the peacocks anytime you'd like.
All right. And so on the definition thing, I'm not sure I'm there now that... Under that new idea. But on everything else, I totally support it. I appreciate everyone's work on it. I have chickens myself. I will admit, when they lay an egg, they're kind of proud of it and they will make some noise, but it's not bad. It's not bad. And you have your doors shut and there's a fence between you. You probably won't hear it. But yes, I'm supportive, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Cooper?
I'm also supportive and would even consider what Councilmember Peterson was talking about so that where peacocks are currently allowed, that they might continue to be allowed in those areas.
Councilmember Daniels?
Yeah, I feel the same way. That's part of the reason, I think, that we were looking to ask. We don't want to limit peacock participation in any way on the lots that it's currently allowable. I do want to make one quick statement, though, that I appreciate the fact that our residents in the town of Gilbert have spoken out about this, that they have engaged in the process. I would imagine not all communities want chickens, but our residents do. And so as a matter of local control, I think this is a fantastic issue for us to take up. And we've been talking about chickens since I got on the council and that was a little bit of a time ago. This ordinance that we have before us today is better than the one that has previously been proposed, specifically because of the aviary issue. And if it hadn't been for stakeholders and residents participating in that process and with our great town staff working hard to make sure that we were really comprehensive in our ordinance, this fits for the town of Gilbert and I really appreciate that effort. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, let's do it. Let's close the public hearing on 29/30 and I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Item 30, amending it to add an L-8 limitation that restricts peacocks on SF-7, 6, and SFD. So SF-7, SF-6, and SFD.
Is there a second? You were wanting some chicks language.
I know. I was going to say, I want some chicks language in here. You're proposing Number 30, right?
I withdraw my motion.
Well, no. It's more of a point of order. I want to make sure I'm amending the right agenda item here. Is it 30 that you're proposing?
Yes. I don't want to do the definition now that I've listened to Councilmember Daniels' point on that. So I'm trying to address that concern through amending Number 30 by adding that limitation on those smaller lots for peacocks. So if you're okay with it, I'll keep the motion out there, but...
We could take care of 29 first and then move to 30 if that makes it easier. However...
We would have to remove the peacock if we're going to follow his motion.
Okay. Give us some leadership and we'll continue.
Then I think we would have to remove, I guess, the 29-peacock line.
There would be no need to move on 29 at all if mine was accepted.
That's what I was thinking. If we approved 30, 29 is done. Is that correct from a legal standpoint?
We wouldn't have to change 29.
That's correct, Mayor. Members of the council, you wouldn't have changed 29 if, under the circumstances of Councilman Peterson's describing.
And Councilmember Taylor, not trying to address the chick part, I do think Mike at least gave an answer that will probably work. And if it doesn't, that could be part of in a year what we could look at. But if you're not comfortable, we could try...
I'd be happy to, if we can get a comment from staff to just come back and make that as part of the analysis, see if there's complaints or issues with that. We can pick it up then. I'm happy with that.
Okay. Thank you. So there's a motion and I ask the question if there was a second.
Second.
Okay. With that motion and second, please vote. Let's approve it with a six-vote vote. Thank you. So we've completed the public hearing before...
Mayor, I just want to make sure, point of order, that I understand Agenda Item 29. Since we did open and close the public hearing item on that item, we don't... You're saying that we can just leave it and not act on it? Or do we need to just reject the change in a formal vote?
Mayor, Councilwoman Daniels, no action need be taken.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Daniels, if we could go to Agenda Item 40, you'll understand in just a minute. And if you could tell the group about Operation Welcome Home, I wanted Senator Farnsworth to hear about Operation Welcome Home. And the Rigglers are right behind you and they'll make sure they give you an invitation. We've had several of our state leaders come and it's one of our finest activities and we want to make sure you hear about it. So what is Operation Welcome Home and when is our next one?
Operation Welcome Home is a local program that we have in the town of Gilbert that allows us to honor members of the military as they return from a tour of duty and especially to give appreciation to their families who have supported them as they've been away. And we are now honoring our 18th, 19th, and 20th recipient of Operation Welcome Home on Thursday, April 17th, here in council chambers at 5:30. We have great community support for this where the Patriot Guard and lots of Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and community residents and family members and friends come to honor those men and women who have served us. And it's just a great opportunity for us to say thank you and to do so in a formal way. So that is Operation Welcome Home. And right behind you, we have part of our wonderful committee, some of our finest leaders, and they would be happy to give you an invite.
So from the town council perspective, thank you for coming. You have formally been invited. If that fits your schedule, please come. Back to Agenda Item 36, Board Commission and Committee Reports. Vice Mayor Cook?
Mayor and council, we had the ECAAB meeting a couple weeks ago and I shared with them the results from the study session that we had. And you're now being asked to participate in a joint meeting between the ECAAB Board and Commission with the joint meeting with the council. I come to find out that that joint meeting has never been done in the four years that they've been in existence, which to me, I know we've had regular meetings with... Joint meetings with other board members. So you've been sent out a number of dates that could work. So they definitely would like to have more dialogue directly with the council.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilmember Peterson, did you?
I could do it under current events or we'll do it now, but want to invite everyone out again. You're probably going to mention the Mayor's Character Race. And Gilbert Can's a great partner with Forest City and we're certainly supporting them in that. Gilbertcan.org to sign up, show your support for good character in our community. It's a way to raise money, to recognize the youth in good character, certainly something we want to reinforce. It is our greatest asset in this community is the character of our citizens. So I strongly support that. That is April... Oh, what's the math? Is that 5th?
5th, yes.
5th. And then one week later is April 12th. And that is a Saturday as well, obviously. And we also have service opportunities on that day. And you can also go to Gilbertcan.org to find out what those are and you click on the Volunteer Registration tab and sign up. Please go check those out. We've got awesome opportunities to serve the elderly, to serve children who've been victims of human trafficking, schools to paint, wonderful service opportunities. So we encourage everyone to go do that. And of course, you'll probably talk about Global Village Festival, but that's actually one of the events Forest City Gilbert is trying to provide volunteers to. And we actually have a group of 15 that signed up for the morning shift and we're excited about that, but there's still an opportunity for the afternoon shift to tear down. So supporting Global Village Festival also on that same day. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. I think that, since I mentioned at the start of the meeting, I won't, other than on the Mayor's Character Counts Race, which is a week from this Saturday, April the 5th, that the town council... Councilmember Taylor doesn't know this. He wasn't... So I now add you that the town council, each of us accepted the assignment by Monday morning to have five teams found and registered. That will help me with a citizen discussion that I've had with Joe. That will help me immensely. But so we had that discussion and that will help to get the numbers up. And then we encourage everyone to go out to the website and sign up as quickly as possible. So thank you. Other items or other discussion on 36? Town Manager Banjo, on 38, future meetings, could you make a comment? April the 8th, we've had some community discussion about BMX and just mention that meeting, please.
Sure, Mayor. Members of the council, I'd be happy to. The town has scheduled another open house for presenting the details on the proposed collaboration between USA BMX and the town of Gilbert. That will be from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM here in the town council chambers. Again, that's on April 8th. We just put out a press release today as well as we'll get that on our website and through all our social media channels. But again, April 8th, the second open house for USA BMX and the town of Gilbert to talk about that proposed collaboration.
And you may continue. 39, report from Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. To follow along with your theme with the Operation Welcome Home, we've been notified by the Arizona Employer Support of Guard and Reserves that Kevin Moore, who works for the town of Gilbert on April 8th, will be presented with the Patriot Award. So we'll get some information out. We're very proud of Kevin and very proud to receive that recognition for him. Also, I wanted to recognize Police...
And just on that note, that would be April the 8th here in council chambers at 10:00 AM. The public would be invited. Is that right?
That is correct, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And what I was interested in was the public was invited.
Yes.
And a little bit of a repeat, but continue.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to recognize Police Chief Tim Dorn and our officers. He received a letter from Governor Janice Brewer thanking him for the support that our Gilbert Police Department did as part of the request for help with the independent care team in early December. care team in early December in helping to work through the backlog of cases that were not followed through on by the state. And because of, Governor Brewer goes on the letter, because of the time and energy and resources, Gilbert devoted to this task, were hereby helped bringing resolution or opening cases and looking into those matters. So just want to thank Tim and his team for all the help they extended.
Thank you. Agenda Item 40, report from Town Council Members on Current Events. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to recognize the passing of one of our wonderful Gilbert citizens, Saturday, Travis Williams, passed away after a longtime battle with a brain tumor. And leaves a beautiful wife and four beautiful children, two boys, two girls. Funeral service is tomorrow morning. You know, he's just, to me, one of the, of many great fathers in our community that have stepped up to the plate, loved his wife, loved his children, built a great family, part of the great network of wonderful families in our community that strengthen our community. So just recognize him, you know, this weekend, and keep the Williams family with his wife in our thoughts and prayers. So thank you.
Thank you. And on 41, report from the mayor, I think we covered everything with the exception that this Saturday, the community is invited to come and cheer on our Kapow superheroes at Freestone Park, 8:00 AM to noon. Thank you for your attendance. Meeting adjourned.